Well, let's just get started. So, we're gonna do a call order. We're supposed to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so we have a nice group to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll do it tonight. Hey Jeff, good to see ya. You got unmuted. Alright, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice. Alright. Now, we're gonna go to item two on the, uh, first thing I need to gender before we go to public speak, uh, Selectman Mandeville will not be joining us tonight, he had a family emergency. So, we'll get that out of the way, so it'll be us four, uh, Board of Selectmen members. Uh, we are gonna go to public speak right now. Paula, if you'd like to go around the people that are on, that would be great.
Sure. Um, Wally, would you like to say something?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Wally.
Okay. Diane, would you like to say something?
No, thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Louise, would you like to say something?
Nope, all set, thank you.
Kurt, would you like to say something?
All set, Paula, thanks.
Okay, Linda, would you like to say something? Linda, would you like to say something during public speak? Oh, yeah, unmuted.
Looks like I'm muted.
There you go.
I was just gonna say I enjoyed the parade on Memorial Day.
Awesome. Glad you enjoyed it, we, we enjoyed doing, being a part of it too. Uh, Mike Plazzi, would you like to say something? Mike Plazzi, there you go.
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. And somebody just joined, um, with a phone number to the call. We're, we're doing some public speak, would you like to say something? And can you identify yourself, please?
This is, this is Dominic Durico.
Hello, Dominic, would you like to say anything during public speak? This is Paula.
Not at the mo, not at the moment, thank you.
Alright.
Alright.
Well, Paula, I would like to just say a little something, I wanted to take a moment, uh, my name's Amanda Gibson. I just wanted to thank our resident state trooper Darrell for posting on his resident state trooper Facebook page about the Black Lives Matter movement that is happening across the world right now to help solve racial injustice for people of color. And surrounding towns and across the state, um, they've posted on their social media pages along with hosting peaceful protests, and I just wanted to coordinate with the Board of Selectmen members on how to appropriately post on our town Facebook page. So, I'll be reaching out about that, whether it's sharing Darrell's post or creating our own. I think it's important, so we can figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's move on from, uh, public speak, we'll go to additions and deletions. Selectmen, do you have any items?
I don't have anything to add.
Jeff?
Nothing here.
Unmute yourselves, Scott.
We had to add libraries, I'd like to motion to add the following agenda items to 7L, the library sprinkler system in Bollards and parking stops.
Okay.
To 7L.
Anybody else? No? Okay, so, all those in favor adding the, uh, library issues irrigation system in Bollards? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody opposed?
I'm opposed, cuz I think we just heard about this today, and I think we should put it on next month's agenda.
Okay.
Adrian, I talked to Adrian about this, and he felt the same way.
Okay. Well, it passed 3-2 then. Let's get on to, uh, number four, Boards and Commissions, Presentations and Appointments, Website Development Committee update, Paul or Amanda, whichever one.
Sure, I'll start, and then I'll hand it over to Amanda. Um, we, we have an updated timeline. Amanda did a great job with talking to our representatives with Civic and, um, nailing down a, a live, um, date for us. So, Amanda, why don't you take it away? Amanda, you're muted, so you gotta unmute yourself first.
Oh, here I am. So, just to make a long story short, we were, we felt that we were being neglected a bit by Civic, and we were assigned a new project leader, and this all happened last week. We, um, connected today with her, and she got us back on track, and we have this great timeline. Um, and here it is. Um, today, she reached out and gave us the website link for the live site, and it is now being migrated. And our, um, date for it being ready is June 23rd, which is exciting, and is this month. And our goal is to have it launched no later than July 8th. So, please let us know if you have any questions, and I just wanted to thank Paula for helping out with this situation.
Okay. Anything else? So, according to your timeline, we'll be able to sit there and get, um, live on the 23rd?
The 23rd is gonna be when we, we see the beta version, so they're gonna send us, um, some stuff to look at. But the actual launch date, when the public is gonna see it, is July, um, July 8th. So, we're gonna...
About Board of Selectmen members, we'd be able to include it in.
Yep.
We'll get an test.
Right, so you, we'll include, um, the webpage that the rest of the board can see prior to the July 8th, absolutely.
Okay. Alright. And Scott or Jeff, any questions?
No, sounds great.
Nothing here.
Okay. 4B Traffic Safety Committee. Appointment of the following members. Steve Goodwin, Steve Willard, Michelle Vale, Deb Thompson. A Board of Selectmen member, Eric Anderson is an ex officio member, and Darrell Turlot is a ex officio member, the state trooper. I would like to be the Board of Selectmen member on this committee, if no one objects to that.
I'll second, I'll second that. Or I'll make the motion, I guess.
Alright, that was easy.
Well, living at the lake, I think you're the obvious choice.
Right, I agree.
You should be the first mountain, I agree with it. I'll close my packet down. So, um, I know Joseph was, uh, was on last week, Steve Willard's a good choice, Michelle Vale, Deb Thompson, no problem. If that's okay, someone can make a motion to appoint those members.
I'll motion to appoint the Lake District Traffic Safety Committee for a duration of 18 months, starting on 6/15/2020. The commission will be composed of the following members. Joseph Godwin, Stephen Willard, Michelle Vale, Deb Thompson, Jeff McGuire, Eric Anderson as ex officio member, and Darrell Tetralt as an ex officiam member. Both the commission will be examining issues around speeding in the Lake District and report back to the Board of Selectmen on appropriate steps the town can take to alleviate the situation. A preliminary report and recommendation are requested in three months.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 More nothing, back to the good ways. Alright. Let's move on to item five, the Town Administrators' Report, Eric, all you.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna give a quick recap. Uh, we've talked a bunch about the upgrades in the new server at the Town Hall, I won't beat that one to death. We're working with CEN on doing the conversion to fiber. We still have some issues in the elementary school as to where exactly the fiber is going to attach. Um, we're starting to work now with, uh, their, the, the school's consultant on that. So, hopefully, we'll have, uh, more progress, uh, pretty quickly with that. Um, we, obviously, we have to do that before we pursue VoIP. Um, we have a couple different VoIP vendors that we're looking at, that should go fairly quickly once we're, we connect to fiber. Um, the costs for the fiber are relatively the same as what we're paying now, plus or minus about 10, assuming we're not using a tremendous amount of bandwidth. Um, she did mention that depending on what the fire department is paying now for their connection, we may be able to use essentially the data plan that the Town Hall is on to cover the fire department too, and decrease their costs. So, it might not decrease the town's cost as the Town Hall, but it may be able to decrease our costs collectively. Uh, we ordered the time clocks for Prime Pay, I put that on hold at the beginning of the COVID thing, but I think we need to execute that and get that rolling. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit in, uh, old business about the personnel policy, so I don't wanna cover that here. Um, I wanted to say we've gotten some feedback, good and bad, about the townwide communications and Civic. As we transition to the new website, one of the things we're going to be doing is switching over to use the emergency alerts just for emergencies, and then have two other channels available that people can sign up for. Um, but anyway, that's, that's, the communicating to residents has been going fairly well, and I've kinda made it a priority lately to, to make sure that they know what's, what's happening and what things are affecting them. Um, so, we published that and on social media, the roadwork schedule, which has now changed a little bit. And I also posted a series of posts on, you know, townwide speeding and what approaches the town can consider to alleviate that. Um, I would like to, interested in hearing feedback from the Lake Safety Committee, cuz that's clearly one area where, where it's, it's, you know, problematic. Um, we also put down a quick post about trail usage and safety, uh, cuz the trails are getting an awful lot more used today compared to what they were even a year ago. So, everybody's gotta kinda get along and do their part. Public Works, we've done a lot of sweeping and a lot of prep before the, the chip seal operations. I prioritize those roads that are getting chip sealed so that they're ready to go. Um, we've gotten all the catch basin clean. We've done one day of chip sealing with Indus, again, just to finish everything that's on the chip seal list. And there was one of the basins on Stanley Drive that had, had failed and was, was getting to be a safety hazard. So, that got torn out down to the, the sump and completely replaced. Uh, we ordered a blower unit for the Steiner tractor mower, um, so we'll be able to blow off the road sides and also the trails. Um, we would've probably preferred to buy a unit for a, the new mower if we had bought that, um, but since we didn't buy the new mower, that was, seemed like the way to go. Uh, we have an application in for, uh, to the Wetlands Commission as a town for the road drainage projects on Shoddy Mill Road. So, hopefully, we'll have the, the approval for that in, uh, early July, and we can get cracking on that. Uh, the chip seal date has been pushed back to the 16th. Um, basically, the contractor's running a little bit behind, and the micro sealing and the, uh, penetrating, you know, road sealant stuff will be in, in July or August. Uh, let's see, I've gotten a number of negative complaints about roads in general. Um, potholes, people calling and via social media. I mean, I know it's an issue, it's simply a function of, of what we have available for funds. Um, I know Jeff had indicated he was interested in maybe taking a ride someday and going, looking at the town roads, and if any of the other Board of Selectmen members wants to do that, I'd be happy to go out with you and kinda talk through what the strategy is and, and what we're looking to do. Um, next up, or one of the next things up would, will be an RFQ for the tree work. We need to get that out, uh, pretty quickly. Um, hoping to do that in the next, uh, couple, next week or so, week to two weeks. Um, been in contact with Brendan Hanfield about the culverts. He's pretty well done with his preliminary evaluation. We should have the final written draft, he promised it, I would have it in my hands by 6:20. Um, we also hired him on behalf of the Inland Wetlands Commission to review a couple of applications that are, or potential applications that are in the floodplain, that we really wanna have a, a good hydrology guy look at. Uh, you guys all saw the sign at the ball field, which came out really nicely painted, and thanks to Jerry and the Public Works crew for putting that in. Um, as far as the transfer stations going, we're well underway with that project. It's kind of a coordination between, uh, you know, Public Works and a few outside contractors. Um, we did have some initial negativity on Wednesday with people who went to the transfer station thinking they were gonna dump their bulky. Apparently, it was not as bad on Saturday, I spoke to Dominic on both days. Um, so, it seems like it's going fairly smoothly. Um, and that's pretty much it, it's, that project is just rolling, rolling along. Um, the other thing I need to address, which I haven't even really taken a whack at yet, is we're having a problem with the pump at the Andover Veterans Monument. Um, so, we're gonna have to figure that out. Uh, there is also a request from the Beautification Commission to do some improvements at the monument. Basically, what they wanna do is bring in a bunch of topsoil, because they, they're having a problem with the, they said there's just not enough topsoil there to, to do a good job growing the grass. And long term, they would like to put in a sprinkler system at that location too, but there's nothing really like pending. Um, also, on the flagpole, we got a couple of quotes for putting a light onto the flagpole so that it's illuminated at night, which, as some of you may be aware, is actually a federal requirement. We've just never actually done it. So, I, I discussed that through the Beautification Commission, and, uh, they picked Lenko for that one. They just felt that, given what the scope of the project is, Lenko was the best quote for that. Connectivity Grant, it looks like we should have no problem using EZIQC. I haven't given the contractor a final heads up. Um, it looks like we've got everything out of that we, we needed. We were able to go back to the state and ask them if we could, you know, increase the scope of that project slightly to cover some, the, the front entrance to the, uh, to the library and repour the ramp, cuz the ramp has a significant lip, and redo the railing. So, we should be able to, we should, we will be able to slide that in as part of the Connectivity Grant, so the town won't have to pay for it, that'll come out of the state grant. Um, so, the Rec Commission, one of the open questions last month was what to do about the signboard that the Rec Commission post, you know, uh, bought a number of years ago. Uh, the Rec Commission has come back to us and said that they would like the, the final location to be outside the community room, so it basically to serve as a notice board for the community room, which seems like a reasonable solution. Um, that's it in a nutshell, I don't wanna go in too deep. I sent you all a bunch of pictures of various different things that were going on around town. Does anybody have questions for me regarding anything in my report?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, can you share, like, real quickly, pros and cons about the communication that people have shared with you with the blast system we've been using with Civic?
Uh, so, the only real, some, there was somebody that was, was unhappy with all the things we were using the emergency communication for, and felt we were overusing that. When you really look back at it, we've sent out, what, a total of five in four months? So, it's not like we're killing people, but several people, well, not several, at least one person felt that using that for just announcing what happened at the trans, was gonna happen at the transfer station wasn't an emergency and wasn't an appropriate use. And I just simply explained to them that we intend to correct that, and if we had rolled it out when we wanted to, which was with the website, we would've incorporated that right from the start, but since we were kind of under the gun and we needed something, you know, we rolled it out without having the other parts of that platform available to us.
So, how, so moving forward, and I think we talked about this way back, but what's gonna be the plan? So, now we've got everybody in this, like, one bucket, right? That, so, are we gonna send out, like, an email to them so that they can log back in and then fix their settings, or what, how are we doing that?
So, that would be what I would suggest, I would suggest we post on the website, um, and we use social media first, and we say, hey, we launched our, our full-blown communications, we now have a lot more options than just the emergency alert system. So, please log back in and sign up for things that may interest you. And I believe the commission originally wanted just three options. Um, one being an emergency alert, and there were two more. One was town, like, Boards and Commissions news, and one was general news, I think. I'd have to relook at my...
Yes, the other two were community events and Boards and Commissions. We, I suppose we can always add more, but that's what the Website Committee had originally agreed on.
Correct. So, and I think that's reasonable, because I think we can start using it for, you know, put most of that stuff out, um, you know, for that.
Sure, okay.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yep.
Good.
Eric, on our, on our road survey, do we have, uh, do we have any identification of significant potholes on given roads?
Not potholes per se. Um, but, you know, each, every road is ranked, um, by something called a PCI or Pavement Condition Index, basically from zero to 100, zero being a road that doesn't exist, and 100 being, you know, like, the unicorn road, the mythical road. Um, you know, so, it's, so it's a, it's a range of both things like potholes and alligator cracking and really deep ruts. So, it's, it's kind of a combination score. We don't have anything that gets out, you know, where are the locations of the potholes.
Okay. And, um, is there a way for us, related to the roads, just to post a ranking of the roads?
Uh, yes, I mean, you just wanna list the quality of each road, is that where?
Yeah, I mean, if we just listed the roads and we sat there and even did them alphabetically and sat there and said, this is their grade as was given by our third-party contractor.
Sure.
We can post that on the website, just to allow people to understand that we're trying to do this differently by, you know, using some kind of methodology rather than just say, well, we're gonna do this road, for whatever unknown reason. So, if we could do that, I think that might give people an understanding of what we're attempting to do rather than, uh, I think we're doing things on a haphazard manner, so. Selectman Mandeville, very nice to see that you could join us. Hopefully, everything went well with you.
As good as it's gonna get.
Okay. So, um, is there any other questions first, Eric?
I don't have a question, but I just had a, a comment. Um, when Jeff Murray and I were down by, um, the monument, trying to test some things out for electricity for the parade, um, the outlet that's down there wasn't working, so I don't know if that has anything to do with maybe the issue that you brought up with, um, the pump? I don't know.
Which, which outlet, the one right at the, where was the outlet?
Um, not, not too far from the telephone pole, so...
It was on the breaker panel, Eric, it was on the breaker panel.
Okay, and you just reset the breaker?
No, the breakers were on, we, we opened it up and the breakers were on, but the outlet was dead.
Hmm, okay.
I wonder if you lost a leg or something somewhere, so, it may, that may be the root, the root to our problem.
Yeah, so, so we have one kinda complicating factor to that, and that is, there's no meter there. Um, and I had a discussion about that with our, uh, EverSource rep, and he, he had looked at it at one time, and he said basically that that was a bootleg install. Um, that was, um, and, you know, cuz, cuz I had had some questions about that, and he said basically, right now, you're not paying for that. Um, there's a transformer, it's connected, but there's, there's nothing there. So, we may not wanna, so, what I'm saying is, we gotta, we gotta gently pursue that, cuz I don't wanna have to pay 20 bucks a month for a meter if it becomes officially there.
Yeah, and it was, it was weird, cuz I drove by that night, the, the flagpole was lit up, and I, I tried plugging in a couple of things to the outlet, and the outlets still didn't work. So, it's, it's definitely a strange setup, so.
Was it a GFCI outlet?
No.
No?
No? Okay.
It was a standard outlet.
It's an outside install and it's not a GFI?
No. There might be a GFCI breaker in the box.
Yeah, it's possible, but it'd be unusual.
But it's, it's a standard outlet.
Huh.
I think there are GFCI breakers in the box, there's one for the pump, there's one for the lights and one for the...
One for the pump. There is one for the pump there.
Yeah, so, there's two, there's two breakers in there.
Right.
That's something maybe we wanna work on.
We're just troubleshooting when we do the, uh, when we do the lighting install, I guess Lenko's gonna do that.
Alright. Okay, any other questions for Eric?
Just one question for Eric, what do we all finally choose on the, the attendance shed? I know you had a, I saw a request, uh, to quote to finish it, is that the plan you're taking? Or, or are we gonna finish it on-site? Just a, just curiosity.
Uh, we'll finish it on-site, they wouldn't offer me a quote to, to finish it themselves. Um, I haven't really, honestly, that's low down on my priorities, Lenko's gonna get the electrical, um, and we have a temp air conditioner we can put in, so we got time to worry about that. That's a fall project.
Just a question.
I may have missed it, but has anyone talked about reopening a Town Hall?
No.
With Eric?
No.
Where are we at with that, Eric? I mean, we should be able to at least have all the employees back at Town Hall now.
Well, actually, not without putting up a bunch of dividers and doing a bunch of things to Town Hall. Um, we can do it, but it's kind of a hassle, actually. And I think, given the rate things are changing, we can wait it out without too much difficulty. And I suspect in a month or so, we're gonna be back to business as usual, and we can avoid doing an awful lot of stuff between now and then. That's my guess.
Any other questions?
I, I have a quick question. Um, I had some connectivity problems, so thank you for your patience. I, I realize I missed the public speak, would there be an opportunity to speak? Or would you like, prefer me to, um, either wait till the next meeting or contact someone at Town Hall?
Well, you can wait till the end of the meeting, uh, there's public speak at the end of our meeting.
Okay. Um, should I zoom, dial back in at a later time then?
You can stay on if you'd like.
Well, it'd probably be a three-hour meeting, I assume?
Well, uh, then your best bet is to come on at the beginning of the next meeting.
Okay. That sounds good to me, I will, I will do that, thank you very much.
No problem.
Goodnight.
Alright, um, let's get to old business. 6A is town personnel policies. I know Eric has provided them too, is Eric, when is your, uh, what is your timeline on this? When would you like these in, in place?
Um, I don't have a specific timeline.
You have to...
I would like to do it sooner rather than later, um, but it depends. I mean, I, I was assuming I would get some feedback from the Board of Selectmen, um, at this meeting, cuz we announced it last meeting and you got a copy. So, if anybody has any comments, I would be more than happy to take them.
You need a deadline for this? We gotta, we gotta sit there and say, we're voting on this date. So we're voting on this next meeting, all right? Is that acceptable to all the members of the Board of Selectmen?
Yep.
Vote on revised and the adjusted, um, town personnel policy so we can get them off of this agenda and let Eric move forward with appropriate policies related to the employees. Okay, um, we're gonna move to six B, the Community Connectivity Grant. I mean, Eric, you reviewed that in your report. Do you have other things that you wanna share with us?
Not unless you have questions.
I have something that, I, I looked over those prints, Eric, and I was wondering if you could, if you still had money on the towns and changed the split rails to the ten-by-tens that we have down at the ball field?
So the only split rail is that little section by the, in front of the public works. Is that the one you wanna switch?
Yeah, how, how long is that down there?
Uh, I'd have to look. It's probably fifty feet.
Just saying that they don't last, that those split rails don't last and those ten-by-tens would be a lot better.
Okay, I mean, we did spec pressure-treated, you know, split rail posts, but it's not, you're right. You know, the bigger the post, the longer it's gonna last.
Exactly.
If you wanna look at ten-by-ten posts instead, okay. Yeah, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. That's actually a good suggestion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, six C, the email provider, Office 365.
So we pulled the trigger on that. Um, I'm just waiting back from the contractor. What I asked them to do is, cuz we was, we had purchased three licenses to get the office product about two months ago and I've asked whether they could set this up and gone back to Microsoft and asked whether they can have the effective date of all of them the same. So we're not getting a bill for three of them and then, you know, two months later, a bill for the rest. So, but that should be in place. David Hicks, our IT guy, is planning on doing the transaction, not this Thursday, but the Thursday after.
All right, I mean, uh, let's, well, let's just go on. So six D is the annual report and audit?
Honestly, I still don't have it. Um, we can't get ahold of the guy. It's kind of crazy, actually. I'm hoping he's dead or he has some other legitimate excuse cuz this really is, is irresponsible on their part. You know, we should have had this thing almost a month ago. You know?
Okay. Um, I mean, to be fair to him though, I mean, we're saying this publicly, wasn't part of the issue the fact that we as a town didn't send out our letters of clearance?
No, that's, as far as I know, that's been taken care of a long time.
No, it wasn't, actually.
Since, I mean, we, those were now a couple months ago, month and a half ago. That shouldn't be holding us up now.
But you're saying you should have had it a month ago. Those letters didn't go out till a month and a half ago. So you have to send them out, wait for a reply, and then he's gotta verify them before he can actually clear the report, right?
Right, but we had, so as far as I know, the only thing he had to do was take the document he gave us cuz he was happy with it, take off the draft and send us the final document. And, you know, that was quite a while ago, way before the last Board of Finance meeting and, you know, you can, honestly, you can at least reply to us and tell us what's going on. That's what's really irritating.
I have, I have a call into him, so I'll try to get with him again for tomorrow and try to get some timeline related to where we're at.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we need to kill it right now in, in the meeting. So we want that as soon as we possibly can and we'll work to get it, so.
All right, fair enough.
Any other questions? Okay, um, six E, the town accounting software?
Unfortunately, we have not, um, Laura was on vacation apparently for two weeks. So we have not heard anything from her.
So Laura has sent out to, she responded to Cheryl and she asked Cheryl to set up a date for the software committee to review, go through the same review that we did with the other software. I got CC'd on that. I don't know whether you did or not.
I did not. Why, why, the whole committee should be getting CC'd on this stuff. You know?
I didn't realize you weren't.
So, so anyway, I had spoken to Cheryl after our last meeting and, uh, I got some information from her related to QuickBooks and as soon as you guys can have that meeting with the committee, that would be great. We need to get that moving and, and set up a defined timeline for that and give a definitive date as to when we're going to try to truly have the software implemented. Which goes along with our next item, which is six F, the Combined Finance Department. We need to make a decision as a board as to what we want to do and a timeline related to Combined Finance Department. So as soon as the Board of Education sits there and evaluates what it needs, what its thoughts are, we should sit there and make some decisions as to when we should combine that department. And what I'm talking about is what month, whether it's, you know, it's, it's obviously not gonna be July and, and it's probably gonna be more like sometime in the fourth quarter that we could actually get it done, but we have to start the ball rolling and make that happen. Anyone else related? I wanna talk about the Combined Finance Department.
No, I think we're just waiting for, we, we've, we've got days in the pipeline. We're just waiting on finalization for that date, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, anybody else on that issue? Okay, we'll move on to seven, uh, new business. Seven A, plans for reopening not the town hall. I know Adrian asked a question about it, Eric, but why don't you give us a little bit of brief understanding of your, your thoughts related to reopening the town hall?
So, the, the state has put out a bewildering number of different, uh, executive orders on this, but as I understand it, if we're gonna bring all the employee, and there, the state is still encouraging any employee that can work at home to work at home. So the deal is basically anytime you have two employees in the same office where they're not physically separated by something, you need to put in some kind of divider mechanism to, you know, prevent their bad humors from, from co-mingling. So practically what that means is both for the, uh, you know, for a number of the offices, what really needs to happen is if the town's gonna do it, we need to start getting plexiglass dividers and we need to start dividing up the spaces. The only other alternative is really to do what we're doing now, which is only keeping one employee per office in at any one time and just staggering when and where the employees are in, which is also kind of a pain in the butt. The, my question is simply, is it worth doing it? Cuz it looks like, given the rate at which we're going, you know, in a month or so, we're gonna be at a place where we don't need to do that. So that's, that's my question. I mean, I can certainly pursue it, um, you know?
Well, so, do we know what the next stage is gonna look like? Is it still gonna have those same requirements in place?
No, we don't. I, you know, I, I don't know what the next stage is gonna look like.
If we're only doing one employee, like for instance in the town clerk's office, if we're only having one employee in there, then are we looking at laying off the other employee while we're working through this?
I mean, I don't think we need to as long as we can get all the work done. You know, I mean, Carol, for instance, is perfectly fine working from home. You know, it doesn't really, you know, you're right, it's an imperfect situation.
But if, if you only really, if we only have one person in the office at a time, I understand that we, you know, we planned on this for a certain amount of time, but at a certain point, if we only have, I, I mean, forgive me for asking, but isn't most of her work require her to be in the office or have access to the files in the town?
Uh, a lot of what she does requires her to be in the office, sure.
I mean, the tax collector, the, the assessor, most of them need to be in the office or access to the office.
I would say neither the tax collector nor the assessor have to be there very often at all, actually. Um, I think both of them are set up fine to work remotely. I don't see any issue with that right now.
So they're bringing, so they're printing bills and bringing stuff home at this point?
They're not printing bills. If they're actually printing stuff, they're doing that from the office, but most stuff is done electronically today anyway and, uh, the, the main software package at the moment is cloud-based cuz we transitioned to the cloud-based version for the, you know, for the extent of COVID.
I mean, my, my point is in those two offices, primarily they're by themselves. So really, the only issue for co-mingling is the town clerk's office, right? And, and the, and the treasurer's office.
And land use. And registrars.
I didn't realize registrar had a set schedule that they're open, but, you know.
Well, they do, they do. You know, it's not a ton of hours, that's true, and you can certainly work around them and land use. The building department, again, that you could probably bring both back now, um, if, if that's your choice.
Well, how many people are in the lower office for the building department? Two at a time? I mean, they're, they're six feet apart. I guess, I guess my question really goes to, well, I have two things. One is, are we having any issues with the town hall with people not being provided the services that they need with a work-from-home structure right now? Are you having issues related to that?
I think we're slightly less functional in the building department than we are with everybody working there on site. It's definitely not as fast with them working remote. I mean, there's definitely people, and it depends whether the goal is to bring in just all the employees back or the goal is to bring all the employees back and have the town hall quote-unquote open. Cuz those are different sets of circumstances.
I, my personal opinion is I think we need to bring the employees back. We're at that point now. I, I just feel like we're at that point. It's not necessarily about having the town hall open fully, but I think, you know, that's where the state is at in a lot of places. That's where most businesses are at. I don't see why we're not there. And as Jeff said, even in the town clerk's office, you know, you, you're more than six feet apart, so.
No, you're not.
If, if you use the first desk and the last desk in Carol's office, I guarantee you that's six feet. Yes?
The problem is not even that. The problem really is if there are requirements for interface with the public and you have to have a plexiglass shield.
But we don't have to open the building any more than we are now. But the employees are then there and they can operate more efficiently.
I mean, I have a problem, Eric. One of the questions where you sat there and said the tax collector, I mean, what is the tax collector? The tax collector from home is doing all of her online data?
Sure.
She's not printing anything off. She's just performing, um, inputting of receipts from online data and all of the checks that she receives that they come to the office, she's coming into the office to process.
Okay.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Does anyone else have an opinion on this? Paula, Jeff, Scott? I mean, I, I just kinda feel like we're at the point where we should be, if we can do it, we should be doing it. Whether we're opening the town hall or not, they're town hall employees, we're paying for them. I, I get that everybody loves working from home, but it's not practical to keep doing that forever.
Okay, so I'll start re, reconfiguring to bring all the employees back.
Well, hold on. There's a difference between the, between, you know, let, let's talk about the dates. I mean, so we have a, a timeline of June seventeenth for the second phase of the state reopen.
Yep.
Right, and Eric, that phase of reopening gives us what? Gives us six feet apart and you're telling us that the state guideline is for plexiglass between employees?
Correct, correct.
If they're less than six feet apart.
Well, if they're less than six feet apart. I mean, the treasurer's office is absolutely, and I mean, I don't even know if you can reconfigure that office to try to get them.
No, but we could stagger their days.
No, no, absolutely. I mean, I, I agree with that.
But we're already doing that. I mean, it's not like nobody's coming in. Either Barbara or Irene are in there at any given time.
We have four other offices that could come back, with the exception of that one that's, that's tight. The other four offices could come back in and work from, from the town hall, and I think that that's appropriate.
And, and like I said, I will start pursuing dividers to comply with state regulations if you wanna do that.
You don't need dividers if we come back on this, you know, if we, if the seventeenth is the, is the date, that's a little over a week away. Why can't we do it on the, on the seventeenth or the eighteenth?
I still don't think that gets you past the issue of having multiple people in one office working.
I, I can, I know at least from my own experience with, with businesses and helping them get set up, including my wife's office, where they have more than one person in an office, as long as they are six feet apart, that was what the hospital regulations, the hospital was following to, to make sure, cuz they have, you know, two people answering phones and stuff in the same space, but they're more than six feet apart, so they don't need a divider.
How do they, how do they handle, so I'm, I understand, I, I think we need to bring them back, but when they're sharing a file cabinet, I mean, I'm not in the town hall, so I don't understand, but like, I know the town clerk's office, they're sharing filing cabinets, so then, then maybe if somebody's in the file cabinet next to the first desk, then they're not six feet away. So, how is that handled?
Right, so, I mean, it's no different than you walking down the grocery store aisle when you go to go around somebody. It's not like you're hanging out there. It's, it's intermittent, so.
Well, I guess we need to decide first of all, are we bringing just the employees back but leaving the building closed to the outside or are we opening it up altogether? And then I think that's the first step to decide, are we, what are we doing there? And then that'll kinda make-
If, if you're gonna do public service, then you have to get divider kits for the desks. But given that, you know, in another month or so after, we may not need the divider kits and given how expensive the plexiglass kits are, I mean, the ones I just bought were over a hundred and twenty dollars apiece, you know, and, and, you know, you're almost a, a two-week lead time right now to get them, so. You know, it is what it is as far as that. I don't know that we need to be serving the public, but I think we need to, to have the employees back in there so that they, we can get back in that mode before we open back up, even if it's just for the next, if it's for a month, it still gets people back in the habit of being in the office and doing their jobs.
Yeah, well, then I, I agree. I think bring them back and leave the building closed to the public. I mean, they can still call the building and, and try and, um, get in touch with them by phone or email and meet them at the door if they have to hand them something, I guess. I, we'd have to work that out, but I, yeah, I agree. I think we need to start taking the next step to bring them back in.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll notify them all tomorrow. No problem.
So just bring them back in after the seventeenth, Eric.
Why the seventeenth?
Isn't that the next opening date?
Yeah, but that's irrelevant for the town hall. That's got nothing to do with us. Today's as good as the seventeenth as far as that's concerned.
Well, what we're, what we're trying to understand, are you subjected to additional guidelines right now between the eighth and the seventeenth and they, they loosen up? additional guidelines right now between the eighth and the 17th and they, they loosen up after the 17th?
Not as far as I know, not for us. No.
I mean, listen, there, to, to, to bring people back and follow the appropriate guidance, you're going to have to have some flexibility. So, I mean, if the office is closed, then we have plenty of space if we did need to move people. I mean, heck, in the town clerk's office, somebody could be working in the safe and somebody could be working in the office. I mean, but Paula is correct. You're going to get within six feet of somebody. It's, it's just going to happen. So. Let, let's, uh, let's think about that and maybe the board of selectmen gets together prior to the 17th to determine what we, what our choice is to do, but.
And Eric, there are certain things they can do, like, you know, like in the town clerk's office, you can have one person that does all the pulling, like maybe, you know, Therese does all the pulling of the files. So if Carol needs something, she pulls them. That way they don't have to clean every single file, every, you know, every cabinet door every time they grab something, you know? You can have one person do it for the day and then that way they're not trying to, they can clean it at the end of the day if they, whatever they handle, you know? So.
Eric, what, what prob, what problems do you envision? Just to start off with, any?
Uh, I mean, you know, I think we're gonna have to reconfigure a bunch of stuff to comply with state law. That's all.
Is there anything specific you're worried about Eric?
Uh, as I think about it, if I know that's your objective, the first thing I would do is I would take over the community room. I would probably put one of the, either the bookkeeper or, or Barbara in the community room. You know, I think you're gonna have some objection, but you know, they can deal with it or they can quit.
Well, I mean, if, if someone's not feeling that they want to come back to work, that's their choice, but we're calling them back. So. I think we've been pretty good about this. We didn't lay anybody off. We could have, so.
Yep, that's fine.
Listen, we're, we're all concerned about everybody. Okay? But I, I think we're in agreement. It's time to get started, bring them back. But if, if an issue arises Eric, give us a call. Okay? We, you know, we're, we understand it's gonna, it's gonna be stressful. Okay?
Eric, one thing, you know, what you said, taking over the community room. Do they have computer access from the community room? Because I know the people in finance department, if they're not connected to commuter, their computer, they're not going to be doing anything. What are they gonna be doing?
Yes, they have wifi in there.
Yes, but do we have a laptop that they can access the files they need?
Just move their computer in there.
Yeah, Barbara brings it to the meeting, so why not?
I mean, putting Barbara in there is fine because you can work in the community room as easily as she can work at home.
Yeah, and she can pull.
If you want to do that, that's fine.
She can pull files and whatever else she needs and then just go back and forth. When they need to go less than six feet, then they have to put their mask on, you know? So.
So Eric, can you sit there and do a brief email to us all as to the requirements for this to occur? Because if you're gonna sit there, I mean, I, I know Adrian said put your mask on. I'm assuming that, you know, if you're having people in the office, are you wearing a mask?
Am I? Yes. Are most employees? No. I mean, they've been ordered to, but they just kind of ignore it. So, I mean, you know, I guess we'll have to start penalizing people then.
No, look, if, if they're in the space, if they're in the space by themselves, they do not have to have their mask on. If they're interacting with another employee, they need to put it on.
Right.
And if somebody's not, write them up. I mean,
Listen.
Not rocket science.
Right. But also keep in mind, there are some people that have health concerns that can't wear a mask. So then we need to address that too, if they bring that up. So.
Right. And you know, let's face it, you have at least a couple of employees, you know, that are, you know, have underlying medical conditions that put them in the high-risk category. So.
We understand that, but this is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let, let's, uh.
This is the same debate everyone is having across this wonderful land of ours as to when to go back and, you know, we're a rural community. Now's the time for us. And we're not asking for everything Eric. We're asking for, you know, come up with a plan as to how to address each office's concerns and we'll go from there.
Yep. Like I said, I, I don't, if, if that's your direction, I have no problem following it. I'm not.
I just, I just want to ask a question right here. What is not getting done by having the arrangement that we have now? What is not getting done? And what would be bringing the employees due to change anything at this point?
Well, look, the reality is.
No, Adrian, Eric, answer the question.
Um, there's not anything not getting done. The question is, like, for instance, the building department, it's slower to get stuff out of them. It's definitely more cumbersome with this arrangement and trying to work. You know, but early on, we put in place the technology stuff we needed to do to be able to function minimally well with people remotely. Cause we didn't know how long this was gonna last. So, I mean, there's not anything that really can't get done remotely. It's maybe less convenient and maybe less efficient and maybe, you know, makes you realize that, you know, there's plenty of free time for lots of people. I don't disagree with that, but you know, at this point, there's nothing that we can't do the way we're doing right now, that I know of anyway.
And again, I'm just, I'm coming at this from, you know, let's get everybody back to work. My mom's coming back to it, somebody that's been in a plant and had to wear a mask all day with safety glasses or, or glasses on. And it's, it's totally a pain and it's totally inefficient. It's, it's not, if, if somebody can do the same job that they're doing from home right now without those precautions, then I'm, then I'm, then I'm, I'm in agreement that they should maybe stay. I would like to get everybody back to work, but it's, um, if the guidelines are still in place and we have to jump through a bunch of hurdles just to bring people in to do the same job that they could do at home, it doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, that's just my two cents.
I, listen, I, I agree with you Jeff. And, and, you know, the, the reality is though, that we are a town who is just now really embracing electronics. So. You know, there's a lot of stuff unfortunately still sitting in filing cabinets that they don't have access to. And I candidly also just have a, an issue with the fact that we literally have one, one, we have one, you know, we have one person in the office and one person not. One person in the office, one person not. You know, if we can get the job done with one person there, then maybe we don't need two people on that job.
Yeah, but there's instances, like I work from home a lot right now, but then there's instances that I have to go into the plant. Those days that I have to go in, I go in. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not in every day. But instances where they have to go and pull files and do certain things like maybe a couple of days a week, then that's fine. They go in the office. But I would like to, right now until things, things are, you know, calmed down, I would, I would, I would err on the side of let's, you know, if you can, if you can work home, if possible, work from home. But if you have to go in, go in.
Listen, given the fact that they're opening restaurants and they're even opening restaurants now for inside dining, you know, coming up on this, in, in another week, I, I think we're at that point, you know?
Well, I have to walk through a thermal scanner and wear a mask all day, so.
Yeah, you do, but, but how big, but there's a lot more people working where you work.
No, it's the same interaction. If you're interacting with, within six feet of somebody, you have to have the mask on.
And, and, and just so we're clear, the thermal scanner actually does nothing besides make you feel better. So.
I'm just telling you, that's the rules I have to abide by.
I know, but, but those are proper Whitney rules. The thermal scanner is not a state thing. It's not a CD.
But Adrian, Adrian, we, we, we all agree that we would like to sit there and, and have everybody come back. There's no doubt about it. And, and listen, your last point is, is actually the one point that is, that is the truth. I mean, because I sit there and I look at those offices and I wonder when people are not in the office, what are they doing for that office? I agree with you. That is a, that is a different issue though. The issue that we have to address right now is how safe do we need to make our employees and, and what are we gonna do? And if we, and I'm with Jeff, if Eric's gotta spend money to build.
But he doesn't have to.
Yes, but you know, um.
I will gladly take the time to help Eric once he puts his plan together to make sure it complies with state.
Okay.
I just did this with my wife's office. It's not that complicated.
Okay, well, it's, it is for us. So we're gonna all sit there and, and, and go through this in, in, in an appropriate manner. So Eric, start a plan to, to sit there and say what you're gonna do and how you're gonna execute it. But if you have to spend a significant amount of money to sit there and bring people back into that office and if they're not efficient, if they would be more efficient at home, I personally believe they should stay at home. But Adrian, I agree with you. Who can be more, who can be efficient? That is the question. And, you know, we do learn a lot. I mean, this is, this is truly hopefully made us all understand and Eric and the, the staff understand truly what jobs in the office are, are full-time and some that are part, that are part-time. So, you know, if they're going home and they're not doing anything, then that's a problem. If they're going home and they're doing work, that's great. So.
Well, Jeff, Jeff, to your point, if they weren't doing their work, I was sure we would have all kinds of emails and all kinds of complaints for residents saying, where's my permit? Where's this? Where's that? I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not seeing that. I did have a resident reach out to me earlier before this meeting. I steered him to Eric and we took care of that issue. It's, I, I mean, I don't see where things are not getting taken care of. That's all. If we had this mass, you know, effort of people not doing any work, then we would be seeing it. We'd be getting.
No, no, Jeff, Jeff, my, my point is not not doing work. My point is the level.
Jeff's in the stay-at-home business. I'm in the get them back to work business, so.
Yeah, but also.
I want to go back to work, trust me.
I know you don't.
Hey.
I go work this whole time.
Quiet. I'm trying to say something. Be quiet.
Paul is working the whole time.
Right, and teaching my kids. Come on. Um, anyway. Also, I want to point out that probably the level of, of services are gonna increase because now people are gonna be thinking about the next project they're doing or paying their taxes or whatever. So.
We have, we have new contractors in town that are gonna need to get permits. You know, we have things going on. The town's gonna start blossoming again.
Hey.
The biggest upshot in the history of upshots, right?
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's gonna ramp up. It's gonna start ramping up again.
Gee, it is, it is no slope. Okay, so let's, uh, Eric, are you okay with that to sit there and please work out a plan and keep our town attorney involved in that and sit there and make sure we do it correctly? So.
And just, just take.
What date do you have in mind?
Yesterday. Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, Mr. Murray, where would, why would you like to do this? You're on mute.
You work from home? Oh my goodness.
Um, I really don't have a timeline. I'm just saying, uh, what, what, what positions do we need? You're saying the building department or, um, it sounds like we maybe need to bring those people in. So if Linda, uh, if people can work remotely, like our bookkeepers and stuff, and just bring them in, it's just, they're just changing location. It's, it doesn't make any sense to me. But if there's some services that we need to bring people in, I think we need to make accommodations for those people.
Yeah, I, I just, I have a hard time understanding how we can access everything from home. You know, that, that, you know, I, I just, it's time. You know, if we can go to restaurants, they can come to work.
The, the building department Eric, you can, you can start them right away without a problem, right?
Yeah, I mean, Ed comes in every day right now anyway. So, yeah, I mean, you know, like I said, tell me what date you want to do it and, you know, we'll make that the effective date.
Well, I would say.
I come in every day. It's not like I have any particular problem against it.
It matters in what you have to do to get those people back into their offices.
Eric, Eric's gonna have to shower every day now because he's gonna have people in there. So that's the issue.
Oh boy. All right. What, we need to give Eric some time.
June 17th, Eric.
Seventeenth, okay.
Thank you. Anybody want to vote on that or am I okay saying it?
That's good. I think the 17th is great.
Let's vote on it and make it official, please.
Okay, who wants to make that motion? Adrian?
I will make the motion that we bring in-town employees back into the building, but not open the town hall for full public access on June 17th.
I'll second that.
Uh, discussion, are we going to sit there and state that we expect this opening to comply with all state guidelines?
I would think that would be correct. Yes.
No, Eric, you said no. All right. Anybody else? All right, no further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
So three to two, it passes.
I just want you to know, Mr. Murray, that means you cannot bid on the contract for the dividers when it goes out to bid.
That's fine. Conflict of interest, I wouldn't do it anyway.
Murray, Mr. Murray and I don't want to spend any money on that.
Who else opposed?
I opposed. The Jeff supposed.
Wow.
That's a first.
I know. Jeff blockade. You've been Jeffed.
I had to, I had to join Mr. Murray. I, 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 I did. So let's keep. I have not had cake. I've got to go sing at your birthday. We've got to go. So 7B transfer station operations and policies.
Again, before you get to that, I think the other thing under opening the town hall should be a consideration of reversing the, what you guys put in terms of public meetings. And what I would say is allow public gatherings to resume as long as all gather the governor's executive orders pertaining to COVID-19 and social distancing are followed.
So I would say we wait another month on that because we can't control who walks in the door.
Your call.
Why?
Cause there's a limit on size and, and they have to be six feet apart. Is someone gonna stand in there and mark off every six feet in the community room?
How many of our meetings do?
Doesn't matter. You, you can't predict it. If it's open to the public and 50 people show up, you gotta find room for them. That's what public means.
Question, how does this impact our summer camp if we have that directive?
I don't know. I'm not running summer camp.
We have a summer camp, it's got to start with 30 kids.
Camp, but there's different rules and there's different executive orders on summer camps.
So can we call meetings now camp access?
Saying it's, it's a, so it's a gathering, right?
If we bring a squirt gun, does it make it legal?
So the way our current rules are, you are correct. With what the board of selectmen passed, you could not do summer camp.
Correct. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
And you are correct.
Yes. So we need to reverse that policy.
Too bad we don't.
Allow summer camp to happen.
If we had town employees in the building, they could work on this, but.
Thank God. We're going to sit there and reverse this. So someone make that motion, please, so we can do this.
I would like to read it. I just don't know what the motion would be.
All right, I'll, I'll find the motion. Number two. I, I motion to allow public gatherings to resume as long as all governor's executive orders pertaining to COVID-19 and social distancing are followed. This reverses a previous board of selectmen ruling on not having more than two people at a face-to-face meeting.
I will second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Adrian's opposed. Scott, are you voting on this?
We need to add some more discussion about this.
See?
Well, I, I was in discussion. You were on mute. What are you doing?
That's not on mute.
I'm not on mute.
We were, we had a discussion. All we're trying to do is open up our public gatherings in accordance with the governor's executive orders. Everybody's gotta follow the governor's executive orders.
So what you're saying is we can have 30 kids in the building, but we can't have 10 employees?
No.
Just pointing that out.
Yeah, that wasn't it. The issue was, the issue was to, to do it, but without. Yeah, that wasn't it. The issue was, the issue was to, to do it, but without spending any money. And if you can't do it, I mean, you already voted to have the employees come back June 17th, so Jeff and I lost.
I'm just pointing out your hypocrisy in voting for a summer camp, but not voting for people to go to work.
I don't know about you, but I haven't even gotten to that on the agenda. So, I, how do you know what my vote is before we even?
You just voted for this. That's why I voted against it.
I voted to allow us to have a public meeting and gathering if you're in accordance with the governor's executive.
Correct.
What did I do? I didn't talk anything about the, the summer program.
But we want people to come back to work and follow the executive orders too.
Already voted for it.
Just saying. Adrian, Adrian, the part you're missing is the executive orders mean we have to put separation, which could be costing us a lot of money.
Don't.
Yes.
Don't.
No.
Only stay six feet apart.
Adrian, you're asking, you're asking, and you're going to want, in the town hall, people to, to, to do what I do every day when I go to my office, which is live on the edge, because I walk behind the person in my office, and I get to my copier, and I'll tell you, I'm within six feet. That's what you're asking. I have the right to do it, because I'm a public, I am a public business owner. I can do whatever I want. If my employees choose to come, I tell them they can work tomorrow. They choose to come, I can, I walk close to them. That's how it is. We're not a public, we're not a, a private business. It's just what it is. So, listen, you, you already won that point. The point here is, do we want to sit there and allow public gatherings and meetings of, of some of the smaller committees, as long as they follow the governor's current guidance? Yes or no?
You already held the vote. You, you had three votes for it. I voted against, and Scott abstained.
Scott, did you abstain or vote no?
I said I need more discussion about this.
Okay.
This, this thing we had with the two people face-to-face meeting was for a reason. That doesn't have anything to do with the governor's orders.
Yes, it did.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't. We did that because the governor was banning all meetings. He banned all in-person meetings, so we passed a motion to sit there and follow that guidance.
Because some people were not following the guidelines, so we made it clear. We clarified that. I need a school district.
So, so Scott, I am, I am opening this up. We'll revote on this and have discussion on this. What discussion do you want to have related to this topic?
I want to re, revisit why, why we had to go over this, uh, I, I remember the motion that we had with the two people, it's because of meetings that people were having at the school.
Okay.
And what was the exact, what was the executive order in, at the time?
He banned all in-person public meetings. All? Not, not, so all meant less than two?
Yeah, we had it, we had it two or more, so Eric could actually meet with people. That's why we left it two or more. So, if Eric had to meet with somebody from another town, or, or somebody outside of, you know, for whatever reason, we left it so he could do his, he could do his job.
So, the new order that's coming up is gonna be how many people? It's 10, right?
Yes, currently it's 10, is what the number is right now. But remember too, this covers a lot of things. This covers the fire department and SERP holding training sessions as long as they comply with the governor's orders, which they can't do right now, because they can't technically meet. That's why, if you notice, when they have a fire call, they leave everybody outside standing in the parking lot. Only the officers go into the building, bring the vehicles out, and then people get in. It's a little, I mean, I, I think we're at the point now where we are, you know, you're already wanting to expose all the town employees, you know, why not, uh, open the meetings up too, if that's, if that's a concern?
And listen, the way that it's worded is, you have to follow, follow the current state guidelines. That's it. If you don't follow it, then you're in violation, and it's not our problem.
All right, right. So I, I understand that we need to follow the state guidelines.
Okay. Any further discussion on this topic?
No, I'm sending you all the state guidelines. Page six is space requirements, which explains everything you need to do in an office space. Any other questions? You'll all have it in front of you.
Okay. Those, and those are the current state guidelines, so that's what people would have to follow.
Yes. Adrian, what?
Down by what day do you think it will go into effect? But as soon, you know, and the other part about this that we all, we all have to realize is, I don't want to have a meeting every other week to change something, because a new guideline.
Has them all laid out for you by date.
Okay.
Pretty simple.
So good.
So what's in effect now, Adrian?
Six foot. Touchless appliances where possible. Um, and you want to put markers on the floor that show where the six-foot marker is between employee spaces, and encourage social distancing in those spaces. They're more concerned with common spaces than they are anything else. In a workspace, as long as you're six feet apart, you're fine.
So are you okay with me ordering touchless door openers, touchless soap dispensers?
It says where appropriate and acceptable. It doesn't say you have to have it everywhere. So, if they're sharing a copier, and they're, you know, they're all, you could have one person do the copying. It's that simple. Hey, I need to copy something. Can you print it out? It's, it's not that hard. I mean, this is really simple. I, I don't know why this is such a big deal. I really do not. We're asking people to come to work and do their job. That's, that's not a safety issue.
You passed that motion. We're not arguing this. Jeff, Jeff, are you arguing this? Am I missing something?
Eric just asked to order touchless door openers.
No, you brought it up. So, so.
So I sent you the guidelines.
Listen, here's the motion on the floor, right? This is the motion that we have on the floor. To allow public gatherings to resume as long as all governor's executive orders pertaining to COVID-19 and social distancing are followed. This reverses a previous Board of Selectmen ruling on not having more than two people at a face-to-face meeting.
All right.
All right.
Hey, you wanna?
I forgot. Did Jeff Murray second that? Or Paul?
I seconded it.
Okay. Any further discussion of this mundane motion that is getting tied into our employees coming back?
Nope.
Okay, can we vote again? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those that abstained? Mr. Mannville, 401. Okay, let's go. Um, transfer station operations and policy, 7B. Eric?
So, I had a discussion with the town's attorney, and maybe he can weigh in on this a little bit, but, so, you know, the, the question becomes what you do with people that just kind of refuse to follow the rules at the transfer station. Um, in truth, we've been kind of ignoring that, and, you know, letting, you know, some level of uh, minor anarchy, uh, transpire there. It's nothing particularly bad. It's not a lot of people, you know, it's a few people on occasion. Um, but right now, we have no real way to enforce anything. And so, in speaking with Jeff, Jeff had proposed a set of rules, which he outlined to you, um, and that were included in the packet, which would have, uh, dealt with that. Um, one of the things that came up in talking this through with the attorney is that because using the transfer station is in some ways, you know, a, a, a right by being a member of the town, that if we were to do it, it really probably would require an ordinance. Um, and not a minor ordinance, so not one you could pass, one that would have to go at a town meeting. So what I would suggest is that we, you know, you allow me to work with Dennis O'Brien and come up with some kind of draft of an ordinance of how it would look like if you want to proceed in that direction.
So, Jeff, let's, let's sit there and go. You, you did send us out something. You want something to get done?
Well, you know, I went up and spoke to Dominic for a little bit. I spoke to Eric about it. And, you know, there, there, there's a situation where we have a couple unruly people that are treating our attendants rather poorly, and, you know, originally I wasn't in favor of anything, but, um, I mean, nobody, no town employee should be treated, um, disrespectfully. Um, and in turn, no town employees should be treating any resident, uh, you know, unprofessionally or disrespectfully. Um, but right now, the town has no teeth to enforce anything, like obscenities against their attendance, threats, just not listening. And with, with, um, those outlines that I listed, you know, um, you know, I think our attendants are doing their jobs by inspecting what comes into the transfer station to make sure we're, we're not throwing away anything that's prohibited into the dumpsters. Um, so, you know, something that gave them the right to inspect what is getting thrown out, and then just to be treated in a fair and equitable manner. Um, I think we should probably look into something like that. Um, you know, um, it's just, it, it is, it's not just the attendance. I mean, it could be any town employee. I mean, there are public works guys, anybody. It's just, it's just common decency. I mean, some, sometimes somebody's gonna have a bad day, and I don't want to punish somebody for having a bad day. So, I mean, we give everybody pretty much one day of, one forgiveness, you know, one, one, you know, one pass. But if it's, if it's a continual habit, we would take action against it. So, I want to do something that's fair and equitable, but I don't really want our, uh, town employees harassed and and demeaned and sworn at. It's, it's really, um, it's really unacceptable.
Is it always the same, a, a residence?
Um, that's why I had Dom call in. I mean, that's, um, because I don't really want us to, you do hearsay from me or Eric. I'd rather get Dom's take. So if he's still on the line, uh, maybe he can elaborate. Dom, are you still on?
I just unmuted Dominic. Hey, Dominic, you're up.
Hi, okay, um. It is mostly the same people, um, that I've had a problem with, well, that Steve and I have had, had a problem with from day one. Um, they seem to have, um, problem with authority, and they're gonna do what they want to do because they hide things in black bags. And after they leave, I open some of them up, and you wouldn't believe what I find in the garbage. All bulky waste, you know, this and that. And, um, if that's the way that the town wants to leave it, that's fine. But I think somebody needs to be more alert on that whole situation because of the fact, uh, I don't know if Willie Waste fines us for that, or, I, I don't know. What is, what is, um, everybody else think?
Are, are they, are, are they speaking inappropriately to you, Dominic?
Oh, yeah. I got called the, the, the F.A. word many, many times.
Why is your ring at the door? Sorry.
And these are always the same people?
Basically, they are, yep. Certain five or six people. Um, you know, the majority of people are just, you know, they ask, you know, where does this go? Where does this go? And they're wonderful. They're wonderful people. And, uh, yeah, it's only that certain amount of people. And they're the same ones, you know? And, um, I asked a guy, when, when we had a lot of traffic in there. I asked the guy, I said, sir, could you not park in the center because the traffic is out to the road, and we need to get cars moving here? He started arguing with me, and it's like, you know, he raised his voice, I raised my voice a little bit, but, you know, something, somebody's gotta pay for that, you know, because he did not move his vehicle. He emptied his trash, and smiled at me, and went on his way.
Um, Dominic, thank you, uh, for that. For, one, one quick thing. Eric, what will it take for us to write up a, a, a policy with the town attorney to sit there? And I see the town attorney raising his hand to talk. You know, I, I agree with Jeff that we have to sit there and make sure that our residents, I mean, we should, we, our residents in a general sense should, should have proper behavior. And if we're trying to do something, you know, the, the transfer station is, is, is a service, but it's also a benefit to the community, and they need to follow the rules. So.
And Dennis, can we temporarily, can we temporarily suspend access for something that's paid for by taxes?
Well, you, you know, normally we, if you do something like this, that, that, you know, ends up with a penalty like that, you'd, you'd really have to do it in the form of a regular ordinance. Um, I, I think Jeff did a wonderful job of writing it up with all, all the, you know, it's got all the, the, the violations, uh, it's got a list of the violations, and it's got, uh, sort of like a progressive, uh, discipline, disciplining, but, you know, you don't have a, the Board of Selectmen, as you know, does not have the authority to pass ordinances except for really, really minor ones. Like, we've got on the agenda today, we've got one that's right near the, you know, it's, 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 it's marginally within the, I would say, the definition of minor ordinance. This goes be, way beyond that. I can tell you this, when, when I heard Jeff say that, uh, town employees deserve to be respected by the, by the public, I recall that even in the town of Mansfield, which prides itself in, you know, proper decorum at all times, they had people coming into town halls and, and, you know, and really giving the town clerk and other, other people a really hard time. And we did develop an ordinance over in, uh, Mansfield, you know, uh, you know, uh, creating violations, uh, that, that, uh, you know, could be enforced against people who, uh, mistreat town employees. Town employees should not be mistreated. No question. So I think Jeff's idea is great. I could take Jeff's idea and turn it into a, an ordinance. The problem is, if you're looking for something that you can enforce next week, yeah, you could pass a resolution saying that, you know, nobody can, um, swear, insult, use foul language toward any town employee attendant at the transfer station. And then go on, write down Jeff's list, one, two, four. But you couldn't, I don't think you could, uh, you could have the bottom line being a penalty of taking away their rights to use the, uh, the, uh, transfer station without passing an ordinance. Why wouldn't you want to pass an ordinance like that? I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. All I'm saying is you just, you just can't do it immediately, like you just did with opening the town hall.
Well, we also.
Did I say that?
Attorney O'Brien, we want you to write up the ordinance.
I will.
Sit there, move forward with that. But we can't, we can't even have a town meeting related to that, because we would violate all the governor's executive orders.
You can have a town meeting. You can have a Zoom town meeting. We're doing it in, in, in the middle of the time.
Okay, so if you sit there and you draw it up, we'll get it voted on then.
I will do it.
But you're saying most of the, most of the legwork's already been done by, by Jeff Murray, correct?
Yeah, Jeff Murray's done a wonderful job. I could almost take his language and, uh, move things around a little bit, and then add a little bit to it, and bang, you got it. It's just, you force it immediately, but, you know, so what? I mean, you, you got, or you could put up, you know, you could start, pass a resolution tonight, like I said, saying, you know, you cannot do this, that, and the other. The problem is, you wouldn't be able to take away somebody's, you know, so you've got a, you've got a, a, a system there, where if somebody buys a sticker, they have a right to use the facility. Okay, you really can't take away somebody's, like, you create a right like that. You can't take it away without some sort of a process.
Okay.
And the way Jeff set it up is just the way I would do it. The problem is, you can't just.
Jeff Murray could have been an attorney. If he didn't decide to be a mayor, he could have been an attorney.
I could say the same for him most often.
It's just sad we have to do this, but you know what? You know, I, I hate to do it, but it's, you know what? I just don't want to see our employees being treated, uh, inappropriately.
Absolutely.
Do we need to make it broad, not just for the transfer station? Should we make it for all town employees?
Yeah, I mean, given, given the, the poo that Carol has gone through with, with stickers at her desk, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, I got, I'll take a look at what I wrote up in Mansfield, and I'll, and I'll meld that together with what Jeff has done.
There should be some type of appeal process as well.
Well, see, remember I talked to you before about that, about having an appeal hearing for citations? And, and, you know, somebody said, uh, well, we can't do that here, because we couldn't come up with somebody to be the hearing officer. And I understand that, because Chaplain has, I, I got a system like that, uh, placed in Chaplain, and they've had trouble finding people who want to be a hearing officer.
Okay.
I thought we had, uh, didn't Celeste Willard come forward for that?
Right.
Yep.
Passed that?
No, we didn't pass it, because we're, that, that was sort of still on the, the Lake District was gonna get hit the most with, um, speeding, and our, our first selectman was afraid he'd be on that list, so.
Okay, I see that. I see.
That, is that, that happened?
You don't remember that?
No.
Speedy.
You know, that, well, it was associated with the, with the idea that Daryl came up with about local fines.
Right.
And I read something on that too. There's a lot of stuff that I write that you guys know.
I totally, I totally understand that. I was, I was referring to Mr. Mandeville saying that it was rejected by me for
Oh, because.
My heavy foot.
No, no, no.
I did not realize that I had. I mean, maybe other members of my family have a heavy foot, but absolutely not me.
Can't have a heavy foot in the end or we're not around. Twenty-five miles an hour, that's slow.
But, but that's okay. We, if you could sit there and do that, we would greatly appreciate.
I can do it.
We'll address that at the next meeting.
I'd be glad.
Thank you very much. Excellent work.
Thank you, Dennis.
Excellent job, Mr. Murray.
Okay, Eric, a seven C upcoming road maintenance projects?
Uh, so I sent around, and you had it in your pocket or packet, just a list of what we had proposed for road maintenance. Um, I sent it around to the town, shared it on social media. So, so we get that information out there. I don't really have anything more to say on that unless you have other questions for me.
Um, the projects that you do have underway, is there anything that you want to bring up to us? Any problems, any things that you foresee as being issues?
Nothing serious at this point, no.
Okay, our crew is busy right now?
Our crew is cranking away at the transfer station. So they're fully involved at the transfer station. I hired Richard Bagan to do roadside mowing. So he's off mowing away independently of the other three.
Okay.
Is there any way we can let the residents know which roads are going to be done next year?
Uh.
We don't know how much money we're gonna have, so.
So.
Which ones would be, which ones would be first on the list when the money is allocated?
I mean, I could prepare a list. I could take next year's allotment from, you know, kind of the five-year timeline. But what, what purpose would that serve? What, what is it that you're trying to do?
There's just questions about some roads and no answers.
Well, before Eric answers that, Scott, I mean, that's what I was asking for before. We, we have put up a road maintenance survey and we're attempting to get at those roads in a, in a, in a logical order. So Eric, if, if, if in that road survey information, I think we should have a webpage that says, these are, these are roads that are on the schedule. They may not all be done in this order. Things are subject to change based upon damage, but we're going to attempt to move forward in a logical fashion.
Right, that's.
Why don't we, instead of just doing that, Eric's putting lists together anyways. Why don't you add in any of the other projects? Like, we, we're doing some random basins too, right? Eric, ER. So let's put together a list of projects that are getting done. And let's, let's put that out there as a public document and we'll also throw it up on Facebook so people know what's getting done and can appreciate that.
What's your timeline? How far ahead do you want to look? One year.
What's getting done this year? So, what do we have this year?
That's, that's already out there.
So first of all, I already put that document out there. That's been out for several months.
But what are they looking for? I don't think you had your basins on there.
I did not add basins on there. I can add drainage work, do that if you would like.
I think, I think the issue, Eric, is, is not necessarily, no one, people will never be happy, especially when their road is not getting what they.
Right.
Sure.
The, the tender loving care that it deserves.
Sure.
You mean, and listen, every resident, yeah, you can break out the stick. Every resident wants to sit there and, and have their road taken care of. Totally understood.
Absolutely.
Reality is the pictures, Eric, that you put out in our package, put out on the website so people, because not everybody drives every road in this town all the time.
Sure.
You know, if we can sit there and, and do that, I think we'd be doing it. You know, you just have to sit there and speak to the residents and tell them, not every road's getting done.
Sure.
It will get done in the timeline. I mean, Eric isn't coming back to Lake Road to fix the problem down my road. I've asked him many times and he's told me no. So every resident in this town should understand that the top first selectman is not getting exactly what he wants. And I don't live on a state road that has been paved and paved so nicely that it is perfect. So, or I don't live on Oak Farm and had that just redone about three years ago. But it's fine, you know? So we're doing the best that we can. And if everybody in our community doesn't understand that, Eric is doing a great job.
He is.
As much as he can.
That'll be determined later at this meeting. Let's not get presumptuous.
I mean, so, so just so that we're all clear, I mean, the, the basic problem we're looking at is not including drainage, not including bridges, culverts, anything like that. We got about a four and a half million dollar backlog of roadwork that needs to be done. And we have about $300,000 a year to spend on doing that roadwork. So if you do the math, most of the roads that need it are not gonna get done, you know? And in the past, what we've done is we have just prioritized just patching potholes. But we haven't even done that well. And the problem is, is that we will never catch up if we go with that, if we go with the traditional worst-first approach, which is what people want. I mean, people who live on bad roads want you to spend money on their road before you spend money on the good roads. And the reality is, in the long term, in a 15-year horizon, what I'm doing will work. But it's gonna piss a lot of people off in the short term. And I don't really have any solution for that. You know, which is why I told you upfront that this was gonna be controversial and you were gonna get some angry people. Believe me, I get plenty of angry people with what I'm doing for roadwork.
And that's, and that's, that's fine. We, I mean, I, I.
You can deal with that.
We can live with that. But the more information that we put out, the better off we're gonna be. So how about Eric? How about a two-year plan? Well, you have a one-year plan out there. How about a three-year plan? And I don't need any more detail than these are the roads that are on the list in this order.
Oh, I said it's, it's gonna take 15 years. We could do a 15-year plan.
We could, but you know, that plan is gonna change. So do a three-year plan and say, these are the roads that we have identified and what we're gonna try to do. And, you know, we're gonna continue to maintain our good roads because that is the philosophy of this board, you know, not just Eric, because we all agreed to it. And if we didn't agree to it, then we all need to change the philosophy because we can change what Eric's doing. But I agree with it. So.
I, I think we just need to get, I think once the new website is up, we can put a section on there dedicated to roadwork and, and town, and that'll help.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
My intention under my administrator's page is to, is to have a lot of the detail, the overall planning details for the town listed. So if people want that information, it's readily available. Because you're right, it's, it's kind of buried now and it's not in real obvious places.
It's not that you haven't put it out, Eric. It's that it's getting missed in the process of.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So we'll get that taken care of, Eric, as we move forward and we'll get that on our website.
Yep.
Let's go to our seven D, our, our Andover Youth Summer Camp. Eric and I were on a conference call, I don't know, Eric, what was that, last Thursday? Thursday, Thursday?
Thursday, Friday, Wednesday.
It was with a member of the Eastern Health, our health inspector, or I don't even know how you would want to phrase that, someone from Eastern Health, Health District. Uh, the Board of Education was represented with Sally and John. Cool was represented with Amy Knox. And Eric and I were there. There was one other person there, Eric and I, and the Attorney O'Brien was there. And there was another individual that was there. I don't know where she was from, but we all discussed what, what we're, what can and can't be done according to the executive orders that are out there as far as summer camps go. And I guess even before we get into the details of it, does everybody from the member, from the Board of Selectmen believe that a summer camp is something that we should be sponsoring? So let's get that out first.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Adrian?
I would want to see some details.
Okay. Scott?
I would like to see some details, but I think that is a, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm generally in favor of it, but you know, we want to make sure we protect them as much as we do our town employees, so.
Okay. And, and I also too believe that it is a, you know, I'm, I am a big believer that the, the, that type of program should be supported by the town as much as possible because it's beneficial for, not only for the parents, but for the kids. And it is something we should do. And now in this time of COVID, we have, we have issues that we have to address. And those issues were addressed in our meeting related to cohorts of 10 and sitting there and trying to keep social distancing. I mean, and the rules from the state are different for summer camps than they are for summer school. So it's not an easy thing. And Amy Knox is on the phone call or on our Zoom meeting and, you know, there are a lot of issues. Attorney O'Brien has written up a draft contract for Cool and the town and Alma, trying to protect everyone's interests related to this. Because even though Alpoa and Alma are not town organizations, they are a benefit to this town and they do things for the benefit of the town that we need to sit there and make sure that they're also dealt with because the summer program was going, is, is planning on using the beach for swim lessons for, for the kids. And so the whole issue from the meeting was that if we could not meet, we could not meet the guidelines of the state, that we would not sit there and be doing this. I don't think it's gonna be easy, but if Amy would like to talk to the board about how it's going to happen, you're more than welcome, Amy. But thank you for the great pictures on your wall. They look awesome.
Thanks. Well, I'll, I'll straighten them out later. Um, so actually, the regulations for a youth summer camp are much more lenient than opening offices and stuff like that as far as spacing and stuff goes. But pretty strict as far as the regulations that they do have. They do have to have small groups. So we'll have groups of 10 or fewer in each group. The max camp size will be 30 children. The idea is that a group is a cohort and a cohort is like a family. So the cohorts are not expected to stay six feet away from each other, but the groups will not interact. We will encourage masks, but if you can imagine keeping a mask on a five, seven, 10-year-old all day long, it's, it's not gonna happen. And hopefully we'll be outside and doing activities that keep them away from each other enough that, that that's not gonna be an issue. Um, there's lots of cleaning and hand washing regulations that will follow. We're gonna have everybody bring their own snack, which last year we provided and everybody provided their own lunch. But as far as food goes, we're gonna have everybody provide their own. Um, and in the bus we're gonna use to take us to the lake, we're gonna seat them, children, every other seat. So that, whereas.
Lost sound, Amy. Amy, no sound.
All right. I'm gonna text her. Hang on. No. There you are. Should I call in?
No, you're doing good.
Eric, you're back.
Okay, I'm back.
The last thing we heard, Amy, was about the bus, every other seat.
The bus, every other seat, but it's not really as important because it'll just be one cohort at a time. So one group at a time will be driven to the lake and they're, they're not intended to have to be six feet apart. But we'll spread them out as much as possible. But it'll just be one cohort on the bus at a time, sanitizing it in between if we have more than one group going to the lake. But that'll depend on the numbers that we have. And what we're gonna do is, I, I started but have not yet finished a checklist of complacency that we're gonna give Eric every day after camp. Um, we're gonna check everyone's temperatures in the morning, both children and staff members before parents leave. Washing hands when they get there as well as after each activity or change of activities or something. Um, we'll keep everybody's possessions separate. Everyone will have their own space to keep their belongings. And each group will be kept separate. So one group will be in, was now the music room. One group will use the gym. And one group will use the stage with the curtains closed, using different exits and entrances that we have available. It's actually a pretty good setup that we have in that area of the school. Um, and then we're, the one thing, we'll try and limit what they share as far as materials. And I'm gonna see if we can get enough, like art supplies for everyone to have their own markers and their own crayons and their own paint sets or something. So I'm gonna try and do that as much as possible, just to keep the touching of shared materials limited.
Amy, is there any accommodation for, I mean, I know we don't have a lot of kids in Andover, but we do have some that may be low income or what have you, that the snack might be an issue. How do we address that?
I hadn't thought of that, Adrian. Um, I, I mean, I can definitely have something on hand. I just was trying to limit the number of times that we're passing things back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, and again, maybe we don't necessarily have that in scale, but there may be a kid that, you know.
Right. And it's, it's really tough this year because.
I, I know. I, I'm just thinking out loud.
It's a good thought. I will, I will put some thought into how we might handle that. But I'll definitely have some things on hand if, if we needed to.
Okay, so the issue, Amy, for me is that based upon what Attorney O'Brien has provided you, I understood that the Cool Board has to approve the contract. Is that happening? Has that happened?
It is happening. I, I have the president's approval. I think she's waiting to hear from the rest of the board as far as like a, a vote. But, um, it sounds good. It sounds positive.
Okay. And your expected timeline for the camp is?
As long as we have the numbers and we're good to go. We are going June 22nd through August 14th. But we may have an issue with August 11th being the primary and happening in the gym.
Okay.
If it's a sunny day, it's not an issue.
That's right. So as long as you can follow, and you believe you'll be able to follow all the guidance?
Yes. Yes. I think the groupings are the biggest guideline and the hand washing and sanitizing and stuff, which is, is not, not extreme if you work with kids anyway. You're doing it all the time.
And, and you've done, you've done some numbers on this and this is at least a break even proposition, or are you looking for any support in this regard?
Well, that's gonna depend on if I can get some more kids this week. I really wasn't promoting the program because I wasn't sure how it was gonna go or how it was gonna look until we finalize things. Right, right now, it's gonna be a little bit tough to break even. Um, but I'm hoping we'll get a few more kids this week before we start.
Do you have it? What's the break even number?
I don't know. I'll have to, I'll have to find that out because different, different plans bring different amounts of money. And at this point, we're having a little bit of reduction because a lot of parents are not going back to work but are working from home. So they don't need like the before and after part of the program. So I'd have to, I have to look at what we have and see what else we might need to get it really sufficient. And I think there, there's gotta be a number where we decide it's not worth it. But I hope we don't find that. I think, I think we can fill the spaces to make it a break even. It's definitely not gonna be a moneymaker this year, but you know, if this was a different year, it would definitely work in our.
How did the program go last year?
It was awesome. It was great. We had super attendants. We had 50 kids registered, you know, not every week. But last year, parents did it just for fun, just to have something for their kids to do. This year, we're not gonna get that. We're getting who needs it. And we have a couple of people who think that the social aspect is more important than the risk and want to send their kid to something.
I think once you start promoting it, you're gonna see the numbers. And then once June 17th comes and things start opening up and people are gonna get. comes and things start opening up and people are going to get their, you know, their job where they have to go back. I, I, I think it's going to be, it's, we're just in this weird phase right now where it's the unknown, right?
I agree. I agree. I just want to be honest. As far as it looks right now, you know, we're, we're definitely going to lose a little bit of money on this and, um.
How, how many families and how many children are signed up right now? Andover families and children?
Um, I have 15 children signed up. Um, I had a few more of, um, I had a parent email me just this morning and say, you know, grandma watches the younger child and we're just not comfortable sending the other two to camp. And when you have multiple kids drop out, it, it reduces your numbers drastically. And then a couple of the families just reducing the, the time that they come. Dad's not working, but he might be working. So we want him to start. Um, so right now we are sort of in a different kind of phase, I guess.
If we, if we get to a point where the numbers are kind of not there, can we maybe cut a week out here or there at the end?
That's what I was thinking. And I'm also thinking of cutting the youngest couple of kids because that would eliminate my need to provide two staff for the preschool group. Um, because I, I'm not getting the preschool group, but if I can put the, um, the kids going into kindergarten and the big kids and take away the, the preschool program part of it this year.
You're cutting out again, Amy.
Yep, we lost her.
Yeah, I just texted her again.
It's my kids. My kids, see, you need to put me on first. My kids were at a scout meeting. You could hear me.
They have those parental controls on the box, you know, and lock them out.
And I know those kids and they're outside 95% of the day. So don't even start with that. Okay? Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm confident. Once you start hard promoting, you're going to get the numbers. And then also, you know, thinking about pulling back a week or like you said, you know, canceling the younger.
The dynamics of the program for this year.
Yeah, I, I hate to think that way, but I mean, I, I'm, I think.
Makes me have fewer staff. It's the one quick fix to the number of staff that I need is to take away the preschool.
Right, right.
Amy, would it help you with, uh, having the recommission, uh, with, uh, supply, uh, equipment for you?
Um, as far as what kind of equipment are you thinking?
Oh, I mean, what would you need? I mean, I know they have a budget and they provided things for you in the past. And I know they do have some funds. So I don't know if there's anything that they could do to, to help you maybe to cut your costs a little bit that you would be spending on these items.
Oh, you know what? I will, I will put a list together and talk to the rec department and see if there's a way that I can get some help.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, I definitely know they have money, some money because I've given them some money that they haven't spent. So, um, let's, um, let's look into that.
I'll, I'll put you in on the email. So you know our conversation.
Okay. That'd be great. That's fine. I'll help you any way we can.
Sure.
And I just want to, I just want to add, I just want to add from a parent of a first grader. Um, I want to, I'm, I want to send him to camp. And the reason I'm doing it is because he's socially isolated from his friends and his other, and the other kids. And I think it's really important that he's, the, the kids spend time together and they play and they go swimming and they do all their things. And it's, it's, it's been very tough on some of the kids in Andover. And I think what you're doing is a great thing. And I think we, and we need to, we really need to, uh, we really need to fill that, we really need to fill this program up.
Yeah. I want to make it as, as much of a normal summer for as many of them as, as we can.
It's, it's been very tough. I can tell you from, from what the parents, it's, I don't have to tell you.
Right. And at least mine have each other. Drive me crazy. Have each other. Um, yeah. That's what a lot of parents are saying.
Yeah. No, everybody misses Miss Amy. So we, I, we sent our kids there last summer and, and they love Ms. Knox and the crew. So definitely. And my other thought was when Jeff said that, so doesn't the rec committee usually do some like summer kickoff event, which I don't, it doesn't sound like they're doing that this year. So I don't know.
You know, I think, I think they mentioned, they mentioned that they might have a little bit of money from that because they do usually do something to open June, June 1st or whatever, um, which I know couldn't happen, but I will have to talk to Carol and, and see what, but I don't, I mean, I got to put one of you on this because I can't just say, hey, where's your money?
Well, I think, I think Jeff, I think Jeff Murray would be happy to be part of that.
Be that person. All right.
So, um, there, there's a motion in the, uh, meeting packet related to the, the summer program. Do anyone want to make that motion?
Just one more question, just one more question before we make this motion. Is this just going to be closed to Andover, uh, residents? Are we going to be opening to other towns?
Well, I think at this point with the, um, issues that we're facing, I think I'd like to keep it closed to Andover students. Um, but, but also, well, I guess that would change if we didn't have, if we had a preschool program and we opened it to the kids that attended Andover Elementary School's preschool program, but live in Columbia or something, I think I'd be willing to take them just because they're their peers and from school.
Because I, I know a lot of the other neighboring towns, especially Coventry canceled their program and some of the neighboring towns. So I mean, I think this is a great thing for our town to show that we do have this program.
Right. And I, and I think because we are small, I think that's why we can do it because, you know, we, we don't have the hordes of people coming. And I mean, hopefully we'll get enough to make it worthwhile, but, um.
Is there a reason? How did you come up with the limit of 30?
Uh, the limit of 30 I came up with because of the groups of 10 and the building that we're using, the, um, the three different rooms. So the groups of 10 for the three different rooms that we have.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah. Up to very recently, 30 was the upper limit. It's now been relaxed to 50, but I don't think physically we can deal with that.
Unless we have the community room. But let's, let's get to that one.
30 is a good number.
Yep.
Let's try to max out 30 and make it happen. So, um, somebody want to read the motion?
Hey, I, I motioned to authorize the first election of the town of Andover to enter into an agreement authorizing the town through the Recreation Commission to hold the Andover Youth Summer Camp in conjunction with Cool and the Andover Lake Property Owners Association and allow the use of the senior transportation 20 passenger bus.
I'll second that.
Do we want to have any further discussion related to this?
I just have one quick question. Is there any way that we can help Amy get the word out on our website, our Facebook page? How can we, is it appropriate for us to help? Um, how can we get the word out?
I, I need, I need Briady to put it out in his Sunday scoop.
Well, we'll ask, uh, we'll ask Diane Grenier to also put that out and, and we're asking her right now since she's on our call to put that out.
I think it's been, I think it's been in her this and that.
So before it was definite?
Yeah. You gotta advertise, man.
So, um, any further discussion?
I'd say put it in text, but we got complaints for that. So.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All those closed? Nobody? Wow. Good. Good, good, good. All right. Let's move on to, uh, 7E, uh, Recreation Commission sign request. Before we get started with this, Eric, the, uh, I, I, I read in here that the, the Recreation Commission is going to come back to us next month with where they want it?
The Recreation Commission was coming back this month with where, which is where they want it, which is directly outside the community room as a notice board.
You mean in the walkway coming in?
No, on the outside of the building, alongside the building.
And the rocks there?
Sure.
Well, that doesn't sound definitive exactly where, Eric.
By the entrance to the community room.
That's not very specific.
How about you get, how about we, we, we push this off and we get an exact location so we know where we're voting on?
Yeah, maybe a picture of exactly where it is. It's going to be.
Okay. Well, I'm all in favor of that. Okay. We're going to move on now to, uh, uh, golf carts in the Lake District.
Oh, boy. This is going to be good.
Yeah.
So Eric, we've had a request for, uh, people to operate their golf carts in the Lake District.
Did this come from Amy too?
No. District.
Seems like a rec thing. That's all. Seems like a rec thing.
Selectman Mandeville, it didn't even come from me. So.
Where did this come from to start with?
Doesn't matter.
So a resident asked whether the Board of Selectmen would consider this because the state allows you collectively, because you are the local traffic authority, to decide to allow, uh, you know, golf carts on any road with a speed limit of 25 miles an hour or below, i- if you so choose. So given that we had a request, I spoke to Mr. McGuire. I got his opinion of it and we, Dennis O'Brien and I drafted an ordinance or a, an order from the local traffic authority that if you so desired, you could pass and put into an effect. Not saying you have to or you should or anything else, just that that is what it would look like if that was a decision you wanted to make.
So was all the people in the Lake District asked if they want golf carts in the Lake District?
Did I go around every single household in the Lake District and ask? No, of course not. I asked Alma and I asked Alpoa for their comment, but did I ask each individual member? No.
So what, what's the pros and cons for doing it or not doing it, I guess?
I mean, you know, I, in some ways I feel like it's kind of the ultimate in laziness, but what I've realized is we're not talking about people who are deciding whether they're going to walk somewhere or drive their golf cart. We're talking about people who are either going to take their golf cart or they're going to drive their Ford Ginormous to the beach, uh, with, you know, by themselves or with their kids in it. So the, the question is ultimately, is it better to have them on lower impact, lower speed vehicles on town roads or driving their regular cars? I mean, honestly, I, I don't care one way or the other. I don't live in the Lake District. I have no dog in this fight. Um, this ordinance is for you to consider. You can do with it what you want.
I would feel a lot better if I knew that a- all the people were in favor of this that lived on the lake. I don't live on the lake, so I don't know.
Eric, Scott, not, and not everyone is in favor. They're.
All right. Well.
Are you in favor, Mr. McGuire?
You're not going to get a, um, it really doesn't, I mean, I, I'm more concerned about people getting injured.
Is that a yes or a no?
Uh, I, I would vote for it because I simply don't think it's going to impact, you know, one way or the other. I mean, I, I'm not going to be negatively impacted. I don't have a golf cart. I never will have a golf cart. So, um, if my neighbors choose to take their golf cart down the road, I'm not going to have a problem. By the way, Selectman Mandeville, since I drive under the speed limit, a, a.
In a golf cart, you mean?
It's not going to impact me. Um, but I, I mean, I can see the negatives, the negatives to it also. I mean, there's going to be, there could be a significant number of golf carts on the road.
If we don't.
Really not 25 miles an hour on the street anyway.
I, I've already heard some remarks from other townspeople asking why just in the Lake District?
Because we're special.
That, well, we knew that.
Well, no, this would be town wide. This would be town wide. You just can't cross any state highways.
Right. Like.
No, that's not true. It's not town wide because any road with a 30 mile an hour speed limit, and there are quite a number in town, you're not authorized. Nothing you can do will allow golf carts on those.
Well, any roads that have 25 or less.
So Woodland Chase could have its own golf cart club if they wanted. That's. Right, Jeff?
Right.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just bringing out the point. I mean, we're going to hear complaints from other people going, why can't I have a golf cart?
Right. Anybody with a, anybody with a road that's under 25 should be able to have a golf cart.
Yeah, exactly.
Or another thing I've heard was people are going to be, um, trailering them to the lake and driving their golf carts to the lake. Where are they going to park their trailers?
I, I guess, I guess I would ask the question, I'll ask the question to Attorney O'Brien or to Eric. What's to stop them now from driving a golf?
Right. I mean, if we don't.
This is my whole point. Why don't I have to make a motion?
It's a motorized vehicle.
What's to stop them from driving their, you know, ATV? What's to stop them from driving their dirt bikes? They're doing that in the Lake District now anyway.
A $1,500 fine and an, and impoundment of the vehicle according to state statute, just so you know.
For, for a golf cart?
Well, for any motorized vehicle that's not authorized to be on the road. Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought a golf cart can be on the road. It just, it doesn't have.
Nope. Nope.
It doesn't have blinkers. It doesn't have brake lights. It doesn't have correct lighting for after hours. It, that needs to have insurance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And it has to be registered with the town.
No, listen, if, 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 there, I don't think there's anyone on this board that is sitting there saying this has to pass. I mean, so if we choose not to pass it, is anyone on the board going to be that upset?
I don't, I mean, I don't.
Paula?
Paula, do you have a golf cart?
I, I do not have a golf cart, but I have.
You got a thick one. Don't let her lie. Just Barbie on it.
No, that's yours, my friend. Um, so no, I, I don't see what the, I think it's fine, but I don't know. I mean, as long as they're not driving it at night, right? And they're being safe and I, I can see where the concern is, but.
All right. Here's my, here's what I'm going to say on it. Given the lengthy discussion that Mr. Anderson, God, I love seeing that. It's like a Matrix movie. Given the, the lengthy thing that Mr. Anderson has had to deal with, with speeding in the Lake District, I think it would be imprudent to even consider this until we stop getting complaints about that. When we stop getting complaints about speeding around the lake, then we'll talk about putting impediments to the proper function of traffic.
You think that more people are going to go out and buy golf carts and speed with the golf carts?
No, I think what's going to happen is you're going to have people that decide to pull over and, and, and chit chat with their neighbor in their golf cart as they're driving by. Hey, Mr. McGuire, how you doing? I know you're Selectman. Can I talk to you about this? They stop on the roadway. They don't pull off the road because they don't want to get stuck with their little golf cart. And then all of a sudden you got somebody come hauling around the thing and they get hit.
Listen, I already know of people that are driving on the lake with their golf carts and that's not happening now.
So give us a list of names and we'll have them impounded.
No.
Listen.
Are you protecting your?
Okay, okay. I, I would, I will sit there and I will agree with Selectman Mandeville because we just established a traffic safety committee. Why don't we sit there and have them go out and, and, and poll more residents in the Lake District to truly see?
Yeah, ask them about this issue.
Is that acceptable? I mean, you just appointed, you just appointed a seven-member board to sit there and go look at the issues in the Lake District.
I don't believe that any one of us should be making a decision without knowing how many people in the Lake District are in favor of having golf carts.
Okay. All righty. All right. Move on. Move on. Um, ordinance regarding the resignation and replacement of any town official, 7G. Have we read the ordinance? Are we okay with our ordinance?
I'm very much okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Okay. Do we need?
I'm good.
Uh, do we need to read that? Or do we sit there? It's already posted in our packet. Can we make a motion to sit there and pass that ordinance? Well, let's ask the town attorney. If we just make a motion to pass that ordinance, are we acceptable without reading the entire?
I believe you are.
Okay. Someone want to make that motion? Adrian, make this motion. Adrian, make this motion.
Um I make I make a motion that we accept the town ordinance as drafted by the town attorney, Des O'Brien um with regards to uh replacement or resigning of any elected official.
Very good.
I think it actually covers does it does it does it cover it appointed also or no? Just so I'm not missing it.
Elected or appointed.
All right, so so. Officials to any town board or committee.
Want me to speak to it? I can.
Yeah, go ahead, quick.
Quickly.
Well, we need a second.
I think I think the concern was that there were resignations being submitted to town chairs and um.
Dennis, we need a second.
I seconded it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Apologize.
All right, well, I don't, you know, I'm not part of the discussion anyway. I'm just giving it. Attorney. But but that's okay. I'm I'll do it. Uh yeah, Adrian raised the problem of possibly uh town chairs or uh chairs of commissions uh getting getting uh resignation letters from uh public officials and sitting on sitting on them for a while. You know, and don't forget, you you if if you if you wait long enough, the uh the uh decision has to be made by you by you people, the Board of Selectmen. If they if they do it within a certain amount of time, the uh the commission or or committee that's impacted will will make the decision. So it makes a difference. And you know, people, a lot of people don't know that when you submit a resignation, it's supposed to go to the town clerk. This will make any any party chair or or chair of a commission or board, if they get a resignation letter from a member, pass it right on to the town clerk where it's supposed to go so that action can be taken uh timely instead of waiting around.
All right, so uh the 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 ordinance, minor ordinance is drafted is is before us. Adrian's made motion, seconded by Scott. Um all any further discussion by any of the members of the Board of Selectmen? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, nothing. Okay, um we're gonna move on now to um seven H, potential purchase of speed control signs. Eric, um why don't you address this and where is the money coming from?
So I would probably, I mean, it can come out of two places. We can take it out of the resident state trooper's budget, but we would have to transfer money into his budget to do it. Um because that's probably where it should come out of, or we could just take it straight out of contingency. Those are our two real options for where we fund this thing. Um couple different options, basically a twelve-inch option and a fifteen-inch option, whether you want the little one or you want the medium-sized one. They're both in. Shoot, but.
Um this is pole-mounted?
This is pole-mounted, but with the variable mount, so you can just attach it to any of our vertical posts.
Okay.
This does not have the solar, but this comes with one backup battery. I got an I I basically had them add in a battery because that means you can have one battery, you know, charging and then just swap out batteries if you decide to leave it in place for a while. The other thing that I really like about this unit is it collects data. So you can look back and you can say, you know, of everybody who came through this radar sign, how fast were they going, you know? And it doesn't take a picture of them, so you don't get, you know, like this guy was going this speed. But what it will tell you is that, you know, on average, thirty people, thirty percent of the people are doing the speed limit. The fastest guy was going this. The average speed is this, and you can graph that data any way you want. So you can move it around and you can identify where in town where the issues truly are.
Right. And so you were involved in uh finding out which one was the best one, Eric?
So.
You picked them out?
So the this was the original recommendation from our resident state trooper. I don't own that. I did look at a couple other units. And a while back, I gave him you some information on a different manufacturer. But you know, when I really look at it, this is a good one. Um it seems to be what all the resident state troopers in the area have. It has the data collection function that's of interest to me. You know, the only downside is you only get, you know, say, three or four days out of a battery before you need to either swap out a battery or move location. So I mean, have if you were gonna leave it in one spot, like in front of the school or something, then you would probably wanna go fixed mount and put a solar, you know, light on or solar charger on it. But in our case, it seems like a pretty good unit.
In the future, you could add a solar array to that if you needed to, if you if you wanted to?
Yeah, I I think because it's it's all modular, so yes, you could add that later if you so chose.
Which one do you which one does the officer like? The third, the twelve or the fifteen?
I don't think he had any real hard, fast, you know.
Do we know what size the one that was uh borrowed from Columbia?
I think yeah, I think that's a fifteen-inch unit.
They make one bigger, so I don't know if Jeff saw that one.
They do make an eighteen-inch. I did not quote that one, so I don't know what the exact costs are for that one.
I'll leave that up to Jeff if he thinks we need a bigger one or not.
Which Jeff are you talking to, Adrian?
The one that just spoke up.
That's that's such an old joke now, okay? Enough. Gosh.
Adrian, it's good about beating things into the ground. You are.
All right, you ready for the motion?
Yes, please.
No, I well, make the motion, go ahead.
I authorize the town administrator to purchase either a twelve or a fifteen-inch speed control sign with a data collection unit, and the money is to be taking taken from contingency. The total cost for the twelve inch is thirty-one hundred and forty-eight dollars, and for the fifteen inch is thirty-three hundred and fifty-three dollars. And Eric or Jeff is gonna pick the which one they're gonna spend the money on.
Well, that's not how it's gonna work, so let's sit there and 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 we gotta decide which one we're gonna do. So Scott, pick one. If you're gonna do.
Pick the fifteen-inch one.
Done.
Let's do the fifteen.
All right, so that's so that's the motion. That would be the motion. So authorize.
The inch sign.
Fifteen-inch speed control sign with collection unit, money to be taken from contingency, total cost um at thirty-three fifty-three for that sign. Okay, who's seconding that?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. The discussion that I had with Eric related to this is contingency the right place for this money to come from? That's that was my issue.
Well, contingency is the easiest place, but you know, you're we're only one transfer away from taking it from a line item that would be more appropriate. So if you would prefer me not to take it directly from contingency and transfer the money from contingency to the trooper's budget and then pay for it out of the trooper's line item, I would do that with no problem.
Okay, and from my standpoint, have we got the trooper's budget or trooper's bill for this year?
No, no.
Okay, so we don't even know if we have money in that line item or we need money in that line item, I mean.
Well, it's more than just one line item because he's got a salary and he's got a supplies line item. What I would do is I would take it out of the supplies line item, um which we over expended anyway because there wasn't really any money in that. And that's where we put the cameras, the field cameras for the ball field out of his line item since it was a security-related issue. So you know, we're over expending it now. We'll just be over expending it a little bit more and we'll transfer money into cover if if that's what we wanna do.
So if we did this out of contingency to any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen have a problem with doing it out of contingency?
No.
Al Poa?
No.
Yeah?
I'm all set.
Adrian?
Oh, I'm good. Don't care where it comes from. Let's just do it.
Yeah. So then let's stop discussion on it and let's have vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, um. The seven I, transfer funds between capital funds and unexpended fund balance.
So we're actually gonna cover that. That's a duplicate. We're gonna cover that under item number ten, motions for transfer of funds from capital accounts. So we can ignore that for now.
Okay. Um we're gonna go to seven J, yearly review of the town administrator. Uh this is uh this is to announce to uh the the people on this call that we are going to have executive session activist. After uh we discuss with the town administrator, uh his yearly review, we will post a we will post something to let you know how that review went, and what we will do is post uh the goals and the the issues that we want the town administrator to address for uh next year.
I I think we also have to post his pay. We'll have to come out and and vote to approve the pay completion package.
Correct. So after the executive session, there will be uh an individual motion made and a vote on that motion.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure we're in compliance, that's all.
Sure, no problem. And uh so any other issues related to that? This is just an informational item. We just wanna let people know we were doing it uh to be as transparent as we possibly could. Any discussion by the members in the Board of Selectmen?
Eric Eric has the option of having it in public if he so chooses.
No, I do not choose.
Okay.
I mean, I don't care one way or the other, but.
No, we we have to give you the option, Eric, that's all.
Yep, understood.
Okay. Anybody else? Scott, Paula, Jeff, okay. Um seven K is the same thing. We're gonna perform a yearly review of the town attorney. Uh we're gonna do that also in executive session, and we will sit there and uh give a brief and I'm I'm losing that word for what I wanna say, but we'll sit there and post our results of that review after our executive session meeting and before our next meeting. Anybody else? Any other questions on that? Any other comments with Board of Selectmen? No? Okay. Let's go to item eight, approval of of a meeting minutes.
Again, we added seven L, which is library.
Library.
My bad, yes, Scott did add that. We do need to discuss that. Uh there were two issues related to that. One was the the irrigation system, and the other is uh bollards for protection of the mural at that uh that building. Uh the one about the mural, um I'm trying to schedule a meeting with Diane and Kathy DeRozier, who is the chairperson of the library committee. Any member of the Board of Selectmen, I will sit there and let you know when I can get it scheduled. I I asked for six o'clock at some evening to try to get down there and see what the request is and related to how we can, you know, get something done. Uh I don't necessarily know that needs to truly be discussed in detail today before we have that meeting.
I'll go.
Say it again. Yep. I'll let you know. I'll let you know what it is. I know I spoke there about that before also. So um the other one, I I think is a little bit simpler. Uh the uh library board has already voted to install a irrigation system in there at the library, and they uh want our approval to allow them to do it. It's an irrigation system that has been funded by donations uh and is not at a cost to the town. They just want approval to sit there and do it. What they're uh what we probably need to do is make a motion to allow them to do the sprinkler system and then but also make it contingent on the fact that it's done after the work for the connectivity grant is completed because what their thought was is they wanted to sit there and uh do this work when all of the other work was being done to their property so that they wouldn't have to damage the property multiple times, which is smart and, you know, it was probably wise not to have their contractors there at the same time the connectivity grant. The contractors are there, so but you know, I don't think that the irrigation system with that at the library and not being with tax dollars, uh it just needs a a a approval, so.
Um. You have one question. Has anyone from the library discussed what their long-term plans are like? There's gonna be, they're gonna need more money for opening it, closing it. It needs to be on a schedule for those types of things and how that's gonna be addressed?
Uh I think Diane is the only one from the library committee on, so if you can sit there and unmute Diane. Let's sit there and uh see if she can help us out. Diane, you are now unmuted.
Am I on?
You are.
Oh, okay. Um first, uh Jeff, before we get to that one, um about the the bumper meeting, I had sent you an email. Kathy and I are available Thursday at six o'clock at the library, if that works for you.
Uh it will work for me if any of the other Board of Selectmen members can make that. That would be great.
Okay, it's a date.
Yeah.
Okay, and Adrian's question about um long-term planning of opening and closing. No, we hadn't discussed that, but we certainly will.
Um Scott, do we have somebody that already comes and does the um the ball field? For winterization and all that?
Yes, we do.
Is it a flat rate or is it per head? Do we have any idea?
Well, Hebron's gonna be doing it this year.
Okay.
But we'd have to talk to them if to see if they would do that that system. It's gonna be a very small system.
Yeah.
I don't know if the town crew has a small uh air. Air, what do you, an air uh compressor?
Yeah, you depending upon how what the actual install sizing and everything is, it can be done with a it could probably be done with something like a sixty-gallon compressor. You need something at least that size for a system like that.
Right. That's just a small yard one. Yeah, it's a small one, yeah.
You know, I I'm just curious because, you know, it may just so the library understands, they're also gonna be looking for probably another three hundred a year to four hundred a year for just basic maintenance to to open and close it, so.
Right. Our ours is down at the ball field is uh I think three or four.
Yeah.
On either end.
Um yeah, so it's a smaller system. It generally runs about three hundred a year. It's hundred fifty for the open, hundred fifty for the close, and then you'll need another hundred dollars a year and just, you know, a a headwind bad or something over the winter, so. Just curious if they had planned for it. I I think it's a good idea in the long term that would allow them to do some nice things down there if they so choose, so.
Right.
Okay, so does anyone wanna make a motion to allow them to do that?
Right. I'll motion to authorize the library board to install an in-ground sprinkler system at the Andover Library using donated fond funds after work being done for the connect connectivity grant is completed.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh item eight, approval of me uh meeting minutes, uh eight A, the Monday uh May eleventh, regular meeting minutes. The Tuesday, I'm gonna make all these all these at one time. The Tuesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty Board of Selectmen and Board of Education Special Minute Meetings, uh meeting minutes, and the Friday, May twenty ninth, twenty twenty Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting Minutes. Somebody wanna make a motion to?
Don't move.
Okay, second that?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Number nine, the treasurer's report. Eric, anything information you wanna bring to our attention on that?
No, nothing major. So y'all know, obviously, the budget passed, um so we have a budget, which is always good.
Okay. So. All right. Eric, well, we'll discuss that later.
Hey, Eric, just out of curiosity, any projections for anything that's left over from last year? And in what you're, are you shifting everything now to push things towards roadwork or what are you doing?
So the the there's an awful lot in motion right now. Um we're definitely gonna be underspent for the year. Um not radically, but but underspent. And we we're also gonna have more, the town brought in more money than it expected because we had under-budgeted uh for ECS. We got quite a bit more ECS in. Um and we're actually doing really well from the revenue side. So I'm not sure what that piece is gonna be, but my guess is, you know, we're we're gonna end up with, you know, fifty to eighty thousand dollars more in revenue than we anticipated. There's a lot of stuff still in flux. For instance, I thought we were going to, if you asked me two months ago, I thought we were going to be way under on bulky waste. And we have caught up an enormous amount just because everybody and their brother is running stuff to the transfer station. So actually, short of closing it for the month, we would have been, you know, really far over on that one. So so there's a lot that are still unknown. We're going to be okay overall. The one that's going to go over budget is the transfer station, the wall upgrade, the the total packages. And that's basically because when we, when CIP allocated the money for that, they really didn't. Anticipate any large scale expenditure for the electrical work. And as we know, that's a big chunk.
We also didn't plan on a poured wall or poured concrete new paths. So.
Correct, correct.
Are you, but I guess my point is if you're. Is that going to eat up the 50 to 80 or do we still have 50 to 80? And if we do, are we trying to? Tie that up in road stuff or something else that we need to get done?
Well, see, I don't think the 50 to 80 on the revenue side, I can just arbitrarily decide to spend. So the increased revenue, there's nothing I can do about that. That's going into the unexpended fund balance. That would take, at this point, a public meeting or the board of finance.
Well, but.
Can't modify the budget.
No, but couldn't you? Couldn't you make a ask for a modification to have that? Transferred to the over expenditure on the transfer station?
I never even contemplated that, to be perfectly honest.
If you did that, then it leaves you the other funds available and you can max out the road work side that we keep talking about we need to do.
Okay.
How about we do it?
I don't, honestly, I don't know enough about what the, that would seem to me an auditor question more than a me question. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I'd be happy to spend more money on roadwork. It's just a question of logistically, can we do it?
Well, the the board of finance can make a, they can decide what to do with those funds. Dennis, you have any input on this?
I mean, what the question is, I was looking up something else.
Dennis, the the conversation is that we've taken in more revenue in some areas. We've over expended some of the budget in certain areas, but we also ended up taking in more revenue. And so all said and done, we're most likely looking at somewhere between 50 and $80,000. We have road work that we need to address. Is it possible for us to use those funds for the road work by having the board of finance denote that?
These are funds that are available to you for the remainder of this fiscal year?
They're funds that we've taken in in revenue this year.
Okay. And you want to be able to spend it on roadwork?
Or at least, yeah, some of it, probably not all of it because we want to leave a buffer in case there's adjustments, but.
Seems to me like it's a, it's a question for the board of finance. But as, but as I heard Eric say, I would check with the auditor. I can look at the charter right now and see if there's anything in the charter that covers it.
I don't know that there is, but.
I don't think so. I mean, I.
There's no restriction on it and I think again, if it falls within other.
No problem. Jeff singing Happy Birthday.
I was like, we're being serenaded.
Yeah, good.
No, so I think, I mean, Eric, I think if it falls within the limits of the charter. And the fact that we're now outside of the third, you know. You could use those funds. For, say for the transfer station and then transfer other funds, which you have flexibility of moving around based on the charter for the roadwork.
I mean, I guess my stomach, Adrian, is that that's not budgeted number. That's not budgeted money. It's money we have, but it's not, it was never money in our budget because we didn't anticipate getting those revenues.
Was it your part?
We're over budgeted, under budget, whichever way you want to look at it. We collected more than than we budgeted. So.
Right.
You're one way or the other.
Where did, where did the money come from?
It came from grants. It came from.
We got more money under ECS than we had budgeted for.
All right, so wouldn't that money?
Question, you can sit there and look at it multiple ways. We got more from ECS, we got more from other areas. We're just. We underestimated our revenue collection.
So if if we had budgeted correctly for ECS, we wouldn't have spent as much town money. On the school, ECS would have picked up the difference, but we we factored in that the state had been cutting fairly regularly.
Right.
And so we went with the assumptions that we were given at the current time.
So let's ask the auditor the question because he's probably the more appropriate person and let's.
I would, I would say so. I'll take a quick look at the charter and see if I find anything in there.
Oh, I mean, I gotta believe that Adrian's correct. We should be able to spend money.
I think you can do it. I just don't know the, you know, the legisla, the legal rubric under which you would do it. It would be a decision for the board of finance.
The thing is, in a, in a normal budget year, because you're spending money outside of the budget itself. So that would have to normally, that would have to go to a town meeting to do.
Yeah, right. But I'm just thinking if, let me talk to the auditor and see if there's a way we can do this because we, even if that gets us half a road or another treat, road treatment, it's a step in the right direction. So.
Sure.
You know?
Yes.
Price of asphalt is so cheap this year. Everything that we can do.
Is it really? I don't think so.
You apparently didn't see for any last year then.
Well, all right.
What's your tonnage rate right now for the town?
I would have to look it up. I don't know it off the top of my head.
You're under 100, though.
Uh, you mean per ton?
Yeah.
Of finished asphalt. Yeah, I was thinking more liquid asphalt is the thing that's really hasn't dropped in price right now.
That never does.
Which is weird.
It's no, it's because of the binders. It's separate. So, but actual tonnage is is probably $30 cheaper than last year. It's almost probably a fifth cheaper. So.
Well, no one, no one in the community is going to be upset if we do roadwork.
Right. So let's see what we need to do, Eric, and I'll talk to the auditor and, you know.
So let's move on from, from that section to. We went through, I mean, I, we all could have went through our town aid road, our cash report, our tax collection year over date, our over expenditure report. Any other questions for Eric or anything else related to that area? Jeff, nothing? Paula, Scott?
Nope.
Okay, Adrian, I'm sure you're good.
Yep.
I don't want to forget you. All right, the budget, transfer refunds, over expenditure requirements, motions for transfers of funds from capital funds.
Before we get to that, we got to do the the four tax refunds for the tax collector.
That's 11.
Oops, did I remember them out of order?
Sorry.
You're right. Yep, my bad.
Okay, we all make mistakes.
Mark that down for the review.
Absolutely.
So what do you want to do with this budget section?
So what we really need to do right now is we need to make the motions now to transfer the funds so that they're transferred effective July 1. You could wait till July to do it. So the board of finance has already set up the capital funds. But only you can take money from an existing capital fund and close a capital fund. Which is a little oddity in our, our charter. So there's basically four of them. There is, one of them, you're just transferring money. You're not transferring all the money. Because we, it's still not officially closed out, so we can't. And we know roughly what our last bill is. So we're leaving enough money in it to pay their bills and keeping the Times Farm Bridge Reserve Fund open. But we're transferring the majority of the money, you know, out. And then we're eliminating the Public Works Building Fund, putting all that to fund balance. And eliminating the new library fund, putting all that to fund balance. And then eliminating the AES Expansion Fund and putting all that to fund balance. And then, once you put that in the fund balance, the budget takes over and on July 1, that money just gets reallocated into the new funds that have already been created. By the board of finance.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So let's, let's discuss, just make sure that the board of selectmen is all understanding of what Eric is talking about. If we're all good, we can just make all those motions. Anybody have any questions related to this issue? Jeff? Paula? Adrian? Nope, God.
I'm all set.
Okay, so who wants to make the first motion related to the capital reserve fund? Titled Times, how about I make him? I motion to transfer 160,000 from Capital Reserve Fund titled Times Farms Bridge to fund balance effective July 1, 2020. Who's seconding?
I second you.
Okay. Discussion? Vote, all those in favor? I motion to eliminate the Public Works Building Fund and transfer all remaining funds to the fund balance effective July 1, 2020.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I motion to eliminate the new library fund and transfer all remaining funds to fund balance effective July 1, 2020.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. I motion to eliminate the AES Expansion Fund and transfer all remaining funds to the, to the fund balance effective July 1, 2020.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so Eric, all the funds from those, those capital funds have been transferred. Is that everything you need done?
That's everything I need done.
Okay, so now let's move on to 11, the tax collector's report and the refund requests. So. The tax collector has given us a. A report. So for this last month of May, well. The month that we're given, May, she, we have collected $170,000 of taxes for the month. We have a remaining outstanding balance for the year of $435,554, which we would expect to collect most of it in June, but. That's actually for all of the years. For 2018, the total is $274,000. Eric, just as a question, have you been dealing with the tax collector as to her collection? You know, efforts on 2017, 2016 and backwards? Have you been having an ongoing discussion with her as to what we're doing to try to collect those back taxes?
I haven't talked to her lately. I mean, we had a discussion, I don't know, a couple of months ago about the, the stuff that had been sent off. I guess that was actually further back than two years old. You know, the, the really old stuff gets sent off to a collection agency essentially. We haven't really discussed collecting taxes from, you know, a year ago. I know she sent out the stuff to everybody saying that. You know, we're going to put on a tax lien if you don't pay up. Because I had a couple panicked calls about that last week.
All right, well. That is something that you should work on with the tax collector to make sure that we do as good a job trying to collect our back taxes due as possible. You know, even for the last two years or this year, you know, I would guess that probably do. We got $274,000 still due for this year, about $81,000 due from last year and $28, $30,000 due from 2016. So. And a good portion of those are for real estate taxes. So. We should be able to collect those. All right, any other questions? Any other board of selecting members? Anybody? No? Okay, so let's move on now to. The, we have to make a motion. For the approval of the refunds. So it's 10A, I'll make this motion. I motion to approve four tax refunds for May 2020 outlined in the packet. For a total of $5,298.67.
I'll second that.
Those refunds are for excess payments. That total. Okay. Okay, they're all excess payment amounts. So you seconded it's got any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Okay, and Jeff, they're in the same packet. So when you come in and sign the other item for the treasurer's office in the morning, you can just sign those two and that'll be done.
Amanda has already informed me that I need to do that. I will get there tomorrow morning and do it.
Excellent.
Do I have Plexigas set up where I'm going to be?
You wear a clear bucket over your head as you enter the building. That would be sufficient.
But I will tell you, I will take a picture and I will send it to Mr. Mandeville. I will have my mask on.
Maybe we should get like individual bubbles that everybody could like walk in.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have my shield over my face.
You can walk in a bubble and you can just roll it around the office.
And my shields and I don't, I don't have any problems with my fellow employees at the town.
So you laugh, but a friend of mine sent me a bunch of pictures that she had taken at the Stores Farmers Market. With all the different get ups people had and there was somebody walking around with a large plastic bucket over their head. In a genuine attempt to prevent themselves from getting COVID.
I don't know if you've seen Mr. Mandeville play golf, but he has a bucket over his head most of the time. So anyway.
But he, but he won't get in a golf cart, right? Because.
He won't get on the golf cart. All right, so we're moving on to the assessors report, revaluation services. Eric, anything you want to address with that?
No, nothing big. I mean, I think we're still at the point, he's like the building inspector that, you know, he's really not going to be entering structures. At some point, that's going to have to, to stop because, you know, at some point, you got to get into buildings and really evaluate the, the upgrades that have been done. But nothing, you know. Nothing super urgent.
Okay. We have all of our department reports. Are there any department reports, Eric, that you want to single out that we should be looking at more than looked at in our packet?
Uh, no, I got the registrar's vote really late. I didn't put that in. You know, because it got in so late. The rest are all pretty straightforward unless you have any specific questions for me on the various different reports.
You know, I'd see the, the one that would probably. Be my biggest issue is the senior, senior transportation. Have we been using the vans at all?
So right now, up to today, the only thing we've been using the van for is we have been delivering food. To the people that senior transportation used to take to the food pantry and food. You know, mobile food share. So we, those people that don't have transportation, we are basically bringing the food to them.
Okay.
Starting this week, because CERT is no longer running the, their food delivery from TDS. We have started up and we will bring one person at a time to the grocery store. There's currently only two people that really require that service that really don't have the outside ability to get themselves and get them food. So those two individuals are basically doing one every, you know, each person will go every second week. So that's, at this point, we don't have any medicals lined up, so we're minimizing the use of the bus. And right now, we're just using one driver. What's in there for senior transportation is a little off. But, you know, Kathy kind of jumped the gun. We talked about it a little in the safety committee meeting. And she put everything out to everybody before, you know, anybody reviewed it. So this is not exactly the plan, what's in your packet. You know, and surprise, surprise, the first I saw of it was when I looked in the packet because, you know, why would you CC the town administrator? But, you know, we do have a plan in place that we worked out with CERT and. and we've discussed it with Rob Miller from Eastern Highlands Health District about how we can operate minimally and operate safely with Senior Transportation. So, right now, we're still doing it on an emergency basis.
All right, any of the other Selectmen have any comments or concerns about the department reports?
Eric, what's the transition plan currently for Kathy's position? As a volunteer to, and she's supposed to be resigning here shortly, right?
Well, I gotta hire her replacement.
And have we advertised for that yet?
We have not. We have not.
Do we need to get, we need to get that done, or?
You know, I, I, we definitely do. Um, I got a bunch of job descriptions I gotta write right now. And I just gotta carve out enough time to actually sit down, write all the job descriptions, and then put it out there and start advertising. It's definitely on my to-do list. It's just, you know, there's a lot of things on my to-do list.
Okay. I just, we're getting, that may be an example of one of the reasons why we wanted to start progressing in that direction, that's all.
Okay, anybody else? Jeff? Good? Paula, good? Adrian?
Oh, good.
Good.
Okay. All right, uh, let's go on to fourteen resignations.
So, we don't have any officially, um, other than David Gastanian, which you already know about, and we've set the special meeting for unofficially, uh, Karen Osborne apparently is moving away from town. So, she is a ZBA member and we'll have to replace her. I emailed her and asked her whether she's officially resigning, but I haven't gotten anything back from her. But I think that one's coming.
Okay. All right.
That's all I know of.
All right. We'll go to fifteen correspondence. Any correspondence we need to be aware of?
None.
Okay. Uh, public speak. Amanda, if you can go through everybody?
Kurt? Are you there? Would you like to participate in public speak?
Okay.
Diane Granier?
I'm new. Okay, you got me there? I just wanted to let you know that Karen Osborne is also gonna be resigning from the one hundred and seventy-fifth Anniversary Committee. She's already spoken to me about that, and I'd hoped that she had already sent in her letter of resignation, but it should be coming.
Yes, I did let her know she had to submit an official letter of resignation to the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, Diane. Lucy Wilson? Okay, and then Bob Hamburger, would you like to participate in public speak?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, that looks like it, so, um, public speak's over. To make the motion to sit there and, well, for the members of the public that are with us, we thank you. We're going to make a motion. So, I, I motion to enter executive session at.
Jeff, before you do that, can I just say one thing? Well, basically, the plan is, everybody gets thrown out of the meeting for right now. As soon as you get thrown out, you can re-register for the meeting immediately and you'll be put in the waiting room. And then, as soon as we come out of the, the executive session, anybody that's hanging on and that wants to will just readmit you to the meeting for the, uh, last items.
Okay, are you saying you're, they have to leave the meeting, because if you remove them, they won't be able to come back in? So, they need to physically leave themselves.
Okay, I did not realize that.
Yeah, because if you, yeah, if you kick somebody out, so to speak, you remove them, they won't be able to log back in. So, we don't want to do that.
So, are you saying I couldn't have thrown Adrian out hours ago and we could have, you know, had a much quieter meeting?
Vivian, do you plan on entering the meeting after the session?
No.
Wait, was that directed towards me?
Yes. Nick, do you plan on re-entering after the executive session?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Okay, so Kurt and Bob Hamburger, if you guys could leave the meeting, if you'd like to get back in, you can re-register right now, correct, Paula? And they would just be in a waiting room until we restart?
Right, so they're gonna hit leave meeting and then they can, they can log back in like they did earlier, and they'll just hang out in the, in the waiting room until they're admitted.
Okay, so, I, I'm gonna sit there and make this motion, and then we can sit there and address everybody as we do this. I motion to enter executive session at nine fifty-seven for agenda item seventeen A and seventeen B, the yearly evaluation, oh, sorry, seventeen A yearly evaluation of town administrator and item seventeen B annual review of the town attorney.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Kurt and Nick, if you guys could leave the meeting, that would be great.
Do we need to call Kurt? I'm not sure if he's there.
Are you telling me he's just leaving us out in the background?
I'm gonna try to call him.
Kurt, are you there?
All right, I'm going to step away for one second. I'll be right back.
He's getting a piece of cake, I'll bet you.
Can't have it unless he has enough for everyone.
Aye.
Well, I hate to say it, then, we're just gonna kick Kurt out.
Should we remove him, Paula, or, I'm calling him right now.
Let's see, we're waiting for Jeff, let's just see if things are going well.
Did everyone get the packet sheets I sent out? For Eric's review, did everyone get those?
Yep.
All right, I gotta hit the men's room here real quick.
Any questions on those?
Amanda, Amanda gets in. Bye.
All right, I'm sorry.
I told you he was getting cake.
Perfect cake. All right.
Eric had to step away, he said.
Pick up.
All right, see, carve out cake. I mean, my daughters, it looks like.
Very nice.
All right, this meeting was supposed to be shorter. My fault. No, not my fault. Adrian's fault.
Adrian's fault.
It's always Adrian's fault. Oh, boy. The cat's fault.
All right.
The cat is going in executive session.
Eric stepped away because he went to the bathroom? Oh, you were doing that, Jeff? My dog was in here. I got a dog. Shooting the core. He was ready to rip the light down.
He's bugging the hell out of me all night. I picked her up.
We want to see the dog, Jeff.
No, the dog's downstairs. The cat's, that's why the cat's.
Oh, Maguires.
My dog, I think, is in bed.
He's got a puppy.
Got a puppy. Idiot.
No, it's not.
Yes, I am. I got, he's a really good dog, though.
Is that the dog you went to St. Louis for?
Don't it, yeah, I did. Did Eric step away because of us, or did Eric step away because he had to go to the bathroom?
You want me to stay on?
Yes, let's do you first.
Are we supposed to be still recording this, by the way?
No.
It's still recording. Somebody, we need to cease the recording.
Um, okay, Eric's the host, so we need to wait for him to come back. To.
So, that's the point of executive session, it's not to record.
Okay.
Yes.
We haven't discussed.
I will stop recording.